This regular meeting of the Board of Education for November 13th, 2018 is called to order. Welcome to everybody present and to our television viewers. I just want to acknowledge that we have a full house tonight. And we're going to be hearing about the Benson Master Plan tonight. I just want to reassure everybody that no decisions have been made as yet. We are moving toward a decision. There are a lot of things that still need to be determined and we need to work out some details. And we're trying to perform due diligence here. We want to make sure that the Benson we build is as good as it can possibly be. And also take care of the needs of all of our students. So, I want to acknowledge that you're here and thank you for being engaged. And we'll be hearing more about this over the next few weeks.
Let's go, you bro!
Benson!
Okay, for tonight's meeting, any item that will be voted on this evening has been posted as required by state law. This meeting is being televised live and will be replayed throughout the next two weeks. Please check the Board website for replay times. This meeting is also being streamed live on our PPS TV services website. As a reminder, we now have our PPS Ombudsman Judy Martin, or Martin, as the case may be, attending all regular Board meetings. Can she raise her hand? Is she, okay. Judy will be here to listen to the public comments and if appropriate, provide additional support to families who need or want it. Judy can be reached at (503) 916-3045 or ombudsman@pps.net. We also have interpreters here this evening and I'd like to ask them to come forward at this time, introduce themselves in the language into which they'll be interpreting and inform the audience where they'll be located.
Hola y muy buenas tardes, me llamo Daniel y voy a estar ofreciendo servicios de interpretación en español para los que necesitan. Voy a estar sentado acá en la parte de detrás del cuarto si alguien necesita, me avisa. Gracias.
Xin chào buổi tối quý vị, tôi là thông dịch Việt Nam. Hôm nay tôi đến đây để thông dịch, nếu mà ai cần thì tôi ngồi ở đằng sau ghế. Cảm ơn.
Tôi xin mà, tôi sẽ giúp chú văn翻译, chẳng hiểu gì bạn. Tôi xin mà, tôi có thể cho con nó bằng phán thì nó sẽ yêu bón mỏng, tôi có thể.
Xin chào, tôi tên là Tátia Nà, tôi sẽ ở bên trái. Xin mời, nếu кому нужен русский перевод hoặc trên tiếng русский, tôi có thể giúp. Chào mừng và mọi điều tốt.
Thank you. Before we move on, Board members, are there any items in the business agenda that you have questions on? This does not include any individual action items listed on tonight's agenda. Do you want to pull anything out? Okay, so our first item is a proclamation. And I'd like to invite Director Espaza Brown to introduce the next agenda item on Native American Heritage Month.
November is National Native American, Native American Indian Heritage Month, which celebrates the contributions and achievements of Native Americans. The month is a time to celebrate rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories, and to acknowledge the important contributions of Native people. Heritage Month is also an opportune time to educate the general public about tribes, to raise a general awareness about the unique challenges Native people have faced, both historically and in the present, and the ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges.
Okay, the Board will now consider Resolution Number 5749, Resolution Proclaiming the Celebration of National Native American Indian Heritage Month in Portland Public Schools. Do I have a motion and a second on Resolution 5749?
Well, first, I'd like to offer an amendment of what I just read.
I think we first have to get it on the table.
Have the motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Director Bailey moves. Director Anthony seconds the adoption of Resolution Number 5749. Do we take public comment now or?
Nope.
Okay. First or a second? Okay, let's do the amendment first.
After just talking to some Native people, they made some suggestions to change the last part of the paragraph, "The ways in which tribal citizens have worked to conquer these challenges," delete that and instead to say, "And to acknowledge the sovereignty of our tribal nations and their contributions to the fabric of our country." Okay. Anyone need to hear that again?
Is this an amendment to the resolution or to the introduction you read?
I'm sorry?
Is this an amendment to the resolution?
Yes, it's changing the last part of the last sentence. Ah, the proclamation, sorry. Anyway, kept tonight. No, the resolution is fine. Okay.
Okay, do we have public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Is there any Board discussion on a resolution on the proclamation? Okay, the Board will now vote on Resolution Number 5749. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes. All opposed, please indicate by saying no. Any abstentions? Student representative?
Yes.
Okay.
It's confident. You are.
Resolution 5749 is approved unanimously. Next, student and public comment. Ms. Hewson, do we have anyone signed up for student comment?
We do, we have five. And our first two speakers are Kylie Malinowski and Karine Alcantara.
Okay, can I just say a few words? The Board thanks the community for taking the time to attend this meeting and provide your comments to the Board. We value public input as it informs our work and we look forward to hearing your thoughts, reflections, and concerns. Our responsibility as a Board is to actively listen without distraction from electronic devices or papers. And one quick reminder, any oversized signs need to be in the back, which they appear to be. Okay. Board members and the superintendent will not respond to comments or questions during public comments. If you want to follow up from the Board office, please contact Ms. Hewson or Roseanne Powell, the Board manager. Guidelines for public input emphasize respecting consideration of others. Complaints about individual employees should be directed to the superintendent's office as a personnel matter. If you have additional materials or items you'd like to provide to the Board or Superintendent, we ask that you give them to Ms. Hewson to distribute to the Board and Superintendent. Presenters will have a total of three minutes to share your comments. Please begin by stating your name and spelling your last name for the record. During the first two minutes of your testimony, a green light will appear. When you have one minute remaining, a yellow light will go on. And when your time is up, the red light will go on and a buzzer will sound. We respectfully ask that you conclude your comments at that time. We appreciate your input and thank you for your cooperation. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Kylie Malinowski. My last name is spelled M-A-L-Y-N-O-W-S-K-I and I'm a junior at Benson. Being at Benson has given me so many opportunities and experiences. I've been able to explore multiple career pathway choices. I've been able to meet amazing people and I was able to find a career or job path that I think could make me happy the rest of the day, like the rest of the days of my life. I came to Benson wanting to be an elementary school teacher, thinking that was like all I could really do, but when I came to Benson, I really didn't have any interest in any of the CTE programs. But sophomore year came and I realized that architecture was something I would honestly love to do. And I've gotten to work with local architects like the Seti Architects involving the Benson remodel and I've been able to go to their firm and my teacher's just been absolutely amazing to give so many opportunities. And along with being part of such amazing CTE programs, I've met like the best community I could ever be a part of. I came from an area that was mostly white and had a lot of money and to come to Benson and to meet people who have to struggle with, hey, I can't always go do things because I don't have the money. Hey, I can't always go do something because I'm so far away. It's almost like heartbreaking to kind of see that. But I'm so happy that I came because the closest friends I've grown to have there, I have a friend that lives in southeast, I have a friend that lives like towards Scat Puce but still in Portland, I have friends who live in the center of downtown and I never would have met them if I hadn't left the barriers of my neighborhood high school. And I think that was something I'll always treasure. It's going to be friendships that I know I'll have the rest of my life. And it's totally crazy how being part of that kind of community can give you a whole new perspective. I, again, like to come from, I come from like the Wilson district area and I never thought that there'd be problems involving a school, like involving money and stuff like that. And I think that that's crazy for like to come to a new area and realize that. So with Benson, there is a community and this community cannot be torn down because of money, that's, or because of what's happening in the city. I stand here a tech man and I will stand here a tech man in 10, 25, 50 years and I want to be able to come back and see my high school and say, "I went to school there." So please, honor the bond and keep Benson a community so it can stay strong in the future time to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Karina Alcantara, A-L-C-A-N-T-A-R-A. And, okay. Hello, Board members. Today, I was honored to receive the Beat the Odds scholarship and in the video showcased, thank you. And in the video showcased, I mentioned how important Benson is to me and how I love being part of the Benson community and being part of the CTE program. It has been devastating to hear how we started the bond with $700 million, correct me if I'm wrong, and now have only 10% of it left for reconstruction for Benson. To me, Benson is more than just a school. It's a place where I spend like 80% of my time when I'm not home and it's one of the few places where I feel safe. Being able to go to Benson is something I'm really grateful for. I have been given many opportunities because of Benson, such as being part of the Health Occupations Program by following people at hospitals, such as right now I'm following an occupational therapist. It's one of the best opportunities I have ever been able to receive. Just, I wanted to let you guys know that I hope that you guys honor the bond that we were given and help keep Benson the community it is because so many students appreciate that and are there because they believe that that students give them opportunities every day. And like Kylie said, I hope to go back there when I graduate and say that I went there and I hope my children, if I have children, go there and are given the same opportunities I was given. Thank you.
Congratulations on your scholarship. Congratulations on your scholarship and all your hard work.
Next, we have Chase Hunt and Ari Becker.
Okay, so, when I, oh, sorry, my name's Chase and then last name Hunt, H-U-N-T. When I first went to Benson, my freshman year, my parents didn't have enough money to live in Portland. We had to move to Washington. And we moved back and forth and back and forth and we now are in Portland. But the issue is, is that when I was in Washington, we were in a lower income housing. I had to bike to school because I couldn't afford a bus pass and I had a flat tire on my bike. I carried a 50-pound backpack, but I still went to Benson because I am passionate about that school. When I was in middle school, I couldn't understand a thing that was said. I had problems, like I had to like see a therapist almost every day for it. I couldn't understand things that were being said at Benson and I couldn't learn. But the second I saw the CTE programs at Benson and the wonderful community it had, it sold me. And when I went to Benson, that was the one time in my life that I felt like I really did belong somewhere. And the skills that I have learned at Benson, I still carry over. I make, I program stuff. And the skills that I learned via those, I still use like all the time in my spare time. I'm passionate about these things and I know a ton of students are passionate about the skills that they learn at Benson. And it's such a wonderful community because all the teachers are extremely supportive and kind and they genuinely do want to see students succeed. I always have fun talking to my art teacher, drinking coffee with him in the mornings, talking about the day. And it's such, it's such an inviting community that I think if you were to shut it down, this would only be a temporary solution to a long-term problem. Not to mention, the temporary solutions that Benson does have doesn't seem to work. When the water fountains were, when there was lead in the pipes, PPS offered to give us office drinking fountains. And those get littered all over the place and those ended up costing more money than fixing the pipes is. And the pipes still aren't even fixed for the school. The school isn't even built up to code currently, but people still go to this school because they genuinely have a passion in it. And if you were to close a school, people would be forced to go into schools in their neighborhoods that they aren't passionate in. And you would see a lot less graduation rates because students wouldn't have a good incentive to learn anymore because no one would care. And that's about it.
Hi, my name's Ari Becker, B-E-C-K-E-R. Benson unites us. We have all these people from all over Portland behind me today. And together, we're all coming together to a school that we don't have to because we believe in it. They believe, we believe, in education and we have a way, and we believe in the way that it's taught. We don't need to shut down Benson or turn it into a skill center. We need to make more schools like Benson. Benson is one of the most unique schools I've ever seen. I've traveled all over the West Coast looking for a unique school for about, since sixth grade. And when I found Benson, I was concerned because of its conditions, but I didn't find any other schools like it. And when I went there for Shadow Night, I knew that this was my school. It was going to be for me and I could change it. It's more than most people can say. I watched him participate in the all-student talk meeting. I listened to the concerns of the people and how they talked about how we need to vote and how our generation needs to be more involved. Benson is that place where we are more involved. We've gathered tonight where I think no other school would have to rally for a school. Most people hate their school, but we have 100 people easily tonight on last-minute notice who gave up their time, who are going to have to go home and do their homework late at night and pay for it the next day. And I don't think any other school would do that, especially in our current state. Why would you want to close a school like that? Why would you want to give, to limit people's opportunities? We shouldn't close Portland, I mean, we shouldn't close PPS. We shouldn't close Benson. We need to rebuild it. Thank you.
And lastly, we have Alex Marley.
Can I just clarify to everybody before the next speaker? Closing Benson is not even on the table. Nobody's talking about closing Benson, so just, just wanted to clarify that.
My name's Alex Marley, Marley, M-A-R-L-E-Y. When I came here to Benson, I was doing a foreshadowing day on eighth grade at my old, my middle school. Before, and this was after, I went to Lincoln, I went to Franklin, and then I went to Brinson. And when I went there, this, I went there, this, I opened, I opened, I opened my eyes to see that there were so many opportunities at Benson, the welcoming vibe that was there. And it's just, no other school has that vibe that I went to foreshadowing. And I just wanted to come into the school really badly and I got accepted. And then throughout these years, I've been having these skills that were, that was brought to me. And I've learned throughout the, throughout the years that this school has its, has its, has its unique ability to teach someone. And all learning, the PSCT, the CTEs and all learning hands-on abilities are amazing and I don't think any other school has those. And I look at my, I look at myself now and if I went to other schools, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like it because this school is like, like it's one of a kind, no school has it. And like everyone else says, I think there should, I think there should be school, more schools like Benson. You know, it provides multiple diverse opportunities, more, and it has high graduation rates. Like there's, there's, it's like people come here to learn after these four years and they go straight into their job and their career. And it, and if you check, if you check with other people, it's like people love the school, they come back every single alumni, for people who, people who love the school, they cheer on, they got people in the back right now like supporting the school that they came here like maybe the 1980s or something like that. And they just love the school so much that they don't, they don't want it to see anything bad happen. And my, my thing, and I would do the exact same thing because this school is the best school I've ever went to. I love the school and I don't want to see anything bad happen. Thank you.
Okay, it appears that we have a little technical issue. Apparently, we need a 90-second break so that the audio software can be rebooted, whatever that means. So, can we start the clock? Okay, we're going to recess for 90 seconds. Hello? Are we on? Okay. All right. So, apparently, audio is back with a vengeance. So we're going to continue with public comment. Ms. Hewson?
Yes, we have six speakers tonight. And our first two are Kate Deane and Smith Ly.
And members of the Board, my name is Kate Deane. My name is Kate Deane, D-E-A-N-E. I am involved with the PPS Dyslexia Advocacy Group, which addressed you in September. And my daughter is a sixth grader who goes to the new Roseway Heights Middle School. First off, I would like to thank you for your action last month to declare October Dyslexia Awareness Month. It is also great news to hear that PPS has convened an internal work group on the dyslexia legislation so that policymakers from across several different departments can come together to plan for the implementation of the new law requiring that kindergarteners and first graders begin to be screened for their risk of dyslexia. Really want to applaud those good first steps. In order to increase public participation and transparency, I would like to respectfully request that PPS take the following actions. I mentioned there is an internal work group right now on the dyslexia legislation. I'd like to request that that group be broadened to include at least one parent and to include at least one educator who is currently working with students who have dyslexia. In addition to that, I'd also like to request that PPS establish an ongoing advisory committee that would be composed of teachers, parents, community members, students, and PPS policymakers to develop an overall plan for the systemic changes that are needed to identify students with dyslexia as early as possible and support them throughout their high, all the way through high school. So we need an overall plan around supporting students with dyslexia. I'd like to tell you a little bit about our experience with dyslexia in PPS schools. My daughter is an intelligent, curious, and articulate 11-year-old. She has struggled with reading and spelling and writing since kindergarten. With the help of a PPS reading specialist, she made great gains in the third grade, but reading continued to be a nasty chore. At the start of the fifth grade, when it was clear to me that my daughter continued to lag behind her peers, I took matters into my own hands and turned to private testing. We learned that she has dyslexia and at that point, she was reading at a third-grade level, a fifth grader reading at a third-grade level. My fears for her success in middle school and beyond exploded. Every teacher that my daughter has had has been capable and competent. However, they did not have the knowledge of dyslexia to be able to recognize the signs nor to help me as a non-educator connect those dots. My daughter is going to be okay. My family can afford the dyslexia-specific tutoring that she needs and we are able to equip her with audiobooks and other technology to help her succeed. I just will conclude by saying that other families do not have the same kinds of privileges. This is an enormous equity issue for the district and we really need this overall plan and some way to make sure that these very intelligent students get the same kind of support that my daughter is going to get. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ian Maurer and Erin Thomas. Sarah Wall and Sarah Kennedy Adams.
Hi, my name is Sarah Wall, W-A-L-L. I'm an advanced math teacher for Dart schools. One of the sites in Dart I serve is Clinton School, which is currently located at Benson Polytech High School. I want to acknowledge the topic of this redesign and sharing space brings up many feelings and opinions for all those involved and appreciate the Board's work to look at solutions that serve all the students in PPS and make room for their learning. As mentioned in the October 30th work session, Resolution 5160 asks that the Board perform an analysis of the location options for Alliance and other multiple pathways programs housed at Benson. It is stated that it was completed on February 7th, 2017, but I could find no record of it in the Board meeting minutes or documents posted on the Board's page. I would ask that the Board now include those findings in the notes and documents from today meeting, today's meeting so that they are easily accessible to the public so that we can see what the outcome of that educational analysis was. As a teacher for Dart, I speak to my next points from a personal local and As a teacher for Dart, I speak to my next points from a personal, local, and immediate perspective. Students who attend Clinton come from all over the city. 100% of our students are in foster care or proctor homes. 100% of our students have experienced trauma and have had interrupted schooling. These students deserve to have a building with all the same functions and accommodations as any other high school student in the district. The board notes from October 30th also state three goals listed under facility goals. Goal one states, "Every PPS school shall provide an equitable and effective learning environment that maximizes the achievement of every student." These students deserve to be included in the conversation from here on out of where they will go and what will happen in their education, in the same way that mainstream students do. In order to ensure that these students are served, it is important to include them in writing in the proposals that are happening now. This process started with a different board and superintendent and will continue for many years. There is no way for us to know if the future will change both these circumstances again and have a whole new group of people making decisions that affect these kids. We all know there is a lack of space in PPS. We all watched last year as the Pioneer Access push and pull happened. We all know Clinton is coming open in the future, and that schools without homes will be fighting for it. I'm not here to fight with Benson students, teachers, or parents, and I do want my students to have the education that they deserve and not be an afterthought of the district. I do not want them to be forgotten when no one is shining the light on the problem. Let this be an opportunity we take to turn the tide of scrambling after the fact. Let this be the time that we thoughtfully decide where these students already displaced their lives get to receive their schooling. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Kennedy Adams, K-E-N-N-E-D-Y-A-D-A-M-S. "The community of Access Academy and its educational model have been damaged by your choice to disperse the school to remote co-locations over five miles apart. Here's how. Sped support has been understaffed by 30%, according to district regulations. PPS has been in violation of required IEP service minutes and writing of new IEPs. Three elementary students receive halftime CY2 instruction on Chromebooks via Skype and must self-administer learning individually or online for the remaining half. This is untenable and will impact more students next year. The geometry teacher arrived Week 10. My daughter, who loves math and always has loved math since first grade, hates it this year. PE is a disaster. The elementary PE position was staffed 12 weeks late. Some sixth graders haven't had PE yet at all, and no middle school student has access to the gym. Elementary no longer receives regular Spanish, tech, library Mandarin. Middle school students do not have tech and still do not have electives, despite that being the reason to co-locate Access at a middle school. We lost a lot of staff due to the move directly and how late the communication and decision were made about location and start time. Some staff got assigned to teach a brand-new subject two days prior to school. Elementary staff does not have ready access to our principal or her secretary, who handles payroll ordering class accounts. There are still unfilled IT accounts, sorry, tickets, and our sound equipment wasn't delivered until October 26. A minimum of 300 instructional hours have been lost by elementary students alone due to busing incompetence. Some bus commutes are one and a half hours one way. Elementary kids are arriving overstimulated and unable to engage. Middle school students report exceptional fatigue, according to teachers. Longer teacher commutes have compromised planning and quality of instruction and caused teacher attrition. Due to district mismanagement of our admissions process, enrollment has dropped 20%. Third and fourth grade historically have enrolled 56 students. Third has 30, and fourth has 40. PPS refuses any more students citing physical space issues. You said nothing would change except the address. The social support of our community is fractured. We have been forced to cancel or greatly modify traditions. We hold our PTA meetings here at Dixon, coordinate busing to other Access locations, or rent space in central locations so our community can come together. The split plan costs $1.2 million each year. In 16 years, Access has never had a permanent home. Instead, it's been given temporary plans and looming sense of elimination. Why does PPS assign optional programs to permanent locations while need-based programs like Access have no permanent location or commitment? When senior PPS staff decline to participate by walking out advisory planning meetings, this is not working together. This is disrespect. PPS, you are failing above-benchmarks students, you are failing Access, the only gifted offering. The projected multi-year split is already harming students. To serve the most kids, Access needs one central location now. And by the way, Superintendent, we want our T-shirt back."
Okay, next item is the Superintendent's Report.
Well, good evening, Directors, students, families, members of the public, and thank you to everyone who offered comment this evening as well. I'm going to start with the weather, just because I was visiting family in California. It was hard not to notice all the smoke in the air. My thoughts go out to all those folks who've been affected by the ongoing wildfires. Here in Oregon, forecasters are calling for mild winter, but we're nonetheless preparing. So, we have already assembled an inclement weather team led by Deputy Superintendent Hertz, and we're updating our comprehensive inclement weather plan. So, we're just making mention of this now, so folks know and are aware. If we get word that snow or ice is in the forecast, or any other condition that might affect how we open schools or transport students, the goal is to make a decision on whether to close schools by 5:30 a.m. of that day, and that we broadly communicate clear messages about any delayed starts or cancellations to families. We understand that preparation is key, so we have held already some early morning rehearsals and exercises, and are working to ensure rapid and effective communication throughout the school system and the city, should we need to make a change to our regular school day schedule. The next edition of the Pulse e-newsletter will feature a guide for families on how they can expect to receive word on school cancellations, changed bus routes, or other critical information. I'd like to spend a little bit of time talking about something that's of critical importance, but oftentimes doesn't get a lot of airtime, and that's our work in curriculum and instruction. As a new administration, we have been working to develop a comprehensive curriculum to be implemented over time at every school in the district, at every grade level. The goal is simple, yet transformational. You should be able to enter any school in our district, from the West Hills to the Eastern boundaries, and have, as a student, the opportunity and access to rigorous, well-defined, and state-of-the-art learning. This is very much work in progress, but what we are doing is introducing the notion of a standards-based educational program at PPS. Under the leadership of our Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Luis Valentino, we're calling this our guaranteed and viable curriculum. And in order to improve outcomes and raise those graduation rates for all of our students, we need to have some key educational ingredients. Curriculum that offers a clear path and opportunity for all of our students to be successful, professional learning opportunities for our educators and our adults, and assessment so that we can monitor student learning and apply supports more strategically. All of this is part of a continuous improvement loop, and is the bread and butter of high-functioning school districts. Here are some of the ways we have begun developing and implementing our move toward a comprehensive curriculum. Thank you to the participation and leadership of teachers throughout PPS. Development of standards-based units of study and sample lessons have begun to be posted. Here's just an example from sixth-grade science. Under the general category of life science, cells and body systems, we have a sample lesson titled "From Molecules to Organisms: Structures and Processes." It calls on students to conduct an investigation, use rigorous techniques, to prove that living things are made up of cells. Every sixth grader in every school should know not just the basics of the way biology works, but the rich details of how life forms, grows, and becomes complex. Here's an example from our first-grade literacy curriculum. Identify words and phrases and poems and stories that suggest feelings or appeal to the senses. Again, every first grader should be able to start identifying those key elements in their reading, not just for comprehension, but also for the sheer joy of it. This is the kind of curriculum work that's occurring not just in core academic areas, but also in areas like health education. For the 1819 school year, under the stewardship of Dr. Jenny Withicombe, PPS is implementing a comprehensive K-12 health education program. Our health education team is working to create and curate a robust set of instructional materials aligned to K-12 health guaranteed viable curriculum provided by content area experts, such as from the American Heart Association, Multnomah County Health Department, and others. To support the GVC, a series of professional learning opportunities have been provided to all six through eight teachers, and opportunities for K-5 teachers are also planned. These are just a few examples of the ways our ongoing work will continue to provide our educators with instructional guidance that will continue to become more refined over time, and ensuring that this work is accompanied by professional development opportunities is critical. So, to date, we've held nine full-day workshops in September and October alone for K-5 teachers. We've had a workshop for ESL teachers coming up later in this month. We have scheduled workshops for kindergarten teachers in February and March. Our curriculum work has also been the central focus of our monthly learning and leading together professional development sessions with our school administrators. This is the direction we're heading. Are we there yet? No. We're just getting started, but every department is working towards this goal. We understand that successful public school systems have a well-articulated and coherent curriculum and instruction being implemented across the school district. In this new district administration, we have new leaders who are rebuilding entire departments to make sure we are delivering on all the functions that support teaching and learning, among all the others. But by the end of the year, we will have developed a vision with all of our stakeholders and our board, in partnership with other internal and external stakeholders, and will have begun to outline a strategic plan to lay out how we will make this vision become a reality. My expectation is that anyone paying attention to PPS will notice that we are talking more about literacy, about what rigorous math instruction looks like that is accessible to diverse learners, how to design a middle grades' education experience that creates a foundation for persistence through high school, and how we calibrate our high schools so no matter which one you attend, you are thoroughly prepared for college and career choices, and that we recognize where those best practices and promising experiences are already occurring, so that we share those across the school system. This is the right path. I'm glad we've started down it. The board can look forward to an upcoming presentation on how our first administration of our new formative assessment, the MAPS, and what we are learning from this first assessment. So, earlier today, Stanford Children had an important event and fundraiser. I was invited to provide the keynote, but more importantly, I wanted to express congratulations to four of our high school students who were recognized and recipients of scholarship awards. We just heard from one earlier for beating the odds. They shared some video vignettes, and our students are amazing for the way that they have persisted and demonstrated resilience, and are clearly on the path to realizing many of their hopes and dreams. We have some amazing students. We also have amazing educators. Our 2018 Oregon Teacher of the Year, Matt Bacon-Brennis, has been bestowed with another honor. He was awarded a Horace Mann Award for Teaching Excellence. Matt will head to Washington, DC for an NEA Foundation Gala in February and to collect a $10,000 prize. And he will be one of five finalists for a $25,000 prize. So, we know we have a lot of dedicated, passionate educators in our district schools, and it's always great to see one of ours recognized by folks, and in this case, one that is so widely known and respected. Congratulations to you, Matt. I also want to highlight another one of our educators from Grant High School. When Grant High School moved into Marshall last year, it gave rise to a wonderful partnership between the Grant Choral Program and the Choral Program at Lane Middle School. Grant began inviting Lane singers to join them at their performances. Lane Choral Teacher Judy Rose began spending time with Grant students and Grant Teacher John Eisman, who returned the favor by visiting Lane. To show her gratitude, Ms. Rose composed a song specifically for the Grant Choir, and we can only do it justice with a short video clip.
I'm Judy Rose, and you're at Lane Middle School.
One, two, one, two, here you go.
When Lane Middle School's music director isn't instructing her students on whole notes and rhythms, she is a composer. Jubilant Day was a gift to the Grant High School Choir.
Well, obviously, when you have a piece that's written specifically for your choir, it's, it's going to be, it's going to have investment from the students. They're going to be invested in that, because they understand the effort and the work that goes into creating something like that. It's really a gift.
I don't know, I listened to it the first time, and I was like, oh, I love these chords, because like, they're, they're pretty, I don't know, they're interesting.
I had worked with their choir in the spring, right before they went to district, and also right before they went to state, and really connected with the kids.
And it really sparked a really intimate friendship, of mutual respect and generosity towards each other's endeavors to be better music educators and impactful people in our community.
And when she walks into the room, we all sing better, we all stand better, we all do everything better, because we're just, her presence is really awe-inspiring, in the way that it's incredible to watch and hear her sing, and to, but additionally, she brings out the best in our choir.
Yeah, I think it's inspirational, and I think it's more meaningful for the students to be performing pieces that, that their teacher has composed.
I have learned much about my instrument and much about myself. I believe, um, she's out there as one of, as one of the best teachers I've ever had.
Ms. Rose is passionate about teaching music, changing young lives, and believes composing is simply her gift of...
Choosing to create beauty in the world.
Congratulations again to our outstanding educators and to our recognized student scholarship award winners. That concludes my report.
The next item is Legislative Priorities and Agenda. The board has been working on its legislative priorities and legislative agenda since an August work session, when we had a more than two-hour discussion of intergovernmental relations, including a very extensive discussion of our proposed legislative agenda for the upcoming session. I'd like to ask Courtney Whistling, Director of Government Relations, to provide a brief report on the background for the proposed agenda that's before the board.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. So, as Chair Moore detailed, we had an August work session where we went through kind of a high-level document, and you all indicated that you wanted more details. And I said, yes, I'll go do that, but also knowing that there's a lot that we don't know, so we can't get too specific on exactly what bills we're supporting, because we don't know what they are yet, we don't even have bill numbers. So, this is meant to be a guiding document that we align what comes out of the legislative, you know, the, when the legislature starts to introduce bills and drop numbers, we can look back to this and say, okay, does this align with this document? Yes or no? Do we want to put our weight behind it? Do we think this is worth our energy, or is it something that we are part of a coalition? And just sort of, how do we engage around each of these measures? There's going to be a lot of measures. So, this is a long, six-month session. Some, some bills will be introduced, and immediately we'll know, based on conversations that we have internally at the legisla, with legislators, that things don't have a path forward, and then other things do. So, we'll game that out when the time comes, but right now, this is meant to be a guiding document for the board to take position on, on the policies and sort of the platform and the priorities that you want to stand behind. So, that's the background, and I'm happy to take questions.
Any questions from board members?
Do you want me to walk through it? I didn't ask you that.
Yeah.
So, obviously, we have a pretty rare opportunity going into this next session, because we now have a supermajority in the legislature, which means we can make decisions around revenue, taxes, those kinds of things, because you have to have three fifths. So, that's interesting. We don't know what that's going to look like yet. It's only been a week, exactly, since the election, so there's a lot of conversations happening, a lot of conversation happening behind the scenes right now, about what that's going to, you know, what's going to come out of that. So, I'm just giving that as a background. So, what a lot of folks are... So what a lot of folks are talking about is how do we adequately fund our schools? It's like the talk of the town. And so the first part of, the first section of this document is titled Funding. The reason that it's such a long section is because it's, we can't do anything without money, bottom line. And we've been inadequately funding our schools for more than, since I was probably in grade school, a couple generations. And, you know, so I think a lot of folks are, continue to be disappointed by that fact and that we need to look for robust funding this next session. So that's a big one. And within that, so there's the State School Fund. That's where the majority of our funding comes from. That's a formula based on who our students are. And so there's that bucket of money, and then there are other separate buckets for, that's the general fund, but there are other separate buckets for other programs. So for example, Measure 98 was a separate bucket of money. There's a lot of interest around that, funding, continuing to fund Measure 98 because folks have explained and shown great progress and shown a lot of success because of that investment. So robust funding for the State School Fund is a huge priority. Another big one that we talked about in the work session is the need to really look at how are we handling social, emotional wellbeing and social, emotional needs of our students, and how do we back that up financially? Unfunded mandates have no place here. If you're not going to fund it, you know, please leave us alone a little bit because we don't, we can't just continue to fund things without additional, additional money. And then I think, let's see, a couple other things. Continuing to invest in our capital needs. We've had help from the, from the facilities matching grants. When we pass bonds, we can match it. That's helpful. It's especially helpful for smaller districts that don't have the community support that we do. And then also seismic retrofit grants, which we've had, again, been awarded annually the last few years, and that's been very helpful. So that's the funding piece. And then the other priorities, which are not meant to be secondary to funding, but you know, a lot of this has to have funding anyway, so it all goes together. Of course, welcoming safe school environments, that's critical. That's not just about security in our buildings, but also around inclusivity. Another big one, of course, response to the Whitehurst recommendations, making sure that we are protecting our students against misconduct. So that will be a big part of the legislative session on the non-funding side. And then, of course, academic achievement. Why are we all here if we're not seeing our students graduate and do well and achieve their goals and, you know, continue to prepare them for college and career and life? And then I mentioned Measure 98, so kind of a separate call-out because it's a separate stream, but continuing to support those, not only investments, but also programs. And then I think finally, just our, and this is not meant to be last, last but not least, important to invest in professional development and recruiting diverse workforce that reflects the student body. That's a bit of a summary.
Do we have a resolution for the adoption of these priorities? I'm just seeing the platform itself.
It's in the business agenda, I think. I think, I believe so.
I don't know if I'm allowed to do that.
Director Constance?
I can raise it here.
Couple of questions.
I'm not, I don't want to pick anybody because I don't think that's my role, so I will leave it to the chair.
Okay, go ahead.
So has PPS hired a contract lobbyist?
Yes.
And who is that?
John Eames.
Did you say the name again?
John Eames Consulting.
He represented us last session. So this is a question, and I just received it. It's about the QEM. So one of the items on the agenda is supporting a $10.7 billion appropriation. So I have a question for the Deputy Superintendent about what that means and...
For Claire.
Yes. Could you come explain? So the question I had was, so based on our current funding formula the state has, if we were to go to a 10.7 and it was fully funded, what would that mean for PPS? And how is that, what's the delta between what we currently have and the fully funded And I appreciate you sending it to me, but it would be useful, I think, for other people to understand what that means.
So our current biennial funding level is 8.2 billion statewide, and our QEM funding level would be 10.7 billion. And the difference per year, rather than a biennial difference, difference for the biennium is 2.5 billion, but for, per year, 1.25 billion. And so we have about 58,000 ADMW in the state out of 708,000 at the state level. And so that makes us 8.2% of the State School Fund formula. So I'm not making any adjustments. This is a very rough number, but it's about 102 million annual funding difference.
Just about the size of our also local option. Thank you.
One of the things I wanted to mention that we had talked about in our work session and that we've talked about every time we've discussed these issues, but actually is not specifically called out under funding priorities is, we say we'll advocate for major revenue reform to support increased investments in education and other services, but we didn't specifically call out advocacy to increase the length of the school year, which is, I believe it's implicit in our priorities because it's something we've discussed and is an underpinning of our strategy, but I wanted to call that out.
It's a great call-out. That was the second item on my list is the longer school year. So if we're looking at ways to provide more instruction so that our students can achieve their goals, that seems like a basic thing. So I'm just, go ahead.
Can I just comment? I think it's an excellent idea, and we need funding in order to make it happen.
I completely agree. And if you want it called out specifically, do we need to amend the resolution?
I don't have the resolution printed out here with the business agenda. I just have the platform, but I would like to amend it to include that in that second bullet point. I can't read it out exactly because I don't have the required language. Do we want to do that now, or do we have further discussion?
Do you want to take a minute to write down some words, and then we'll come back to you?
Sure.
Okay. So just a couple mechanics and then some content questions. So do we have any, what specific bills do we have in Ledge Council being drafted now? What are the topics?
Yeah, so the Whitehurst Report Bill, that is our concept, is still in the drafter's hands. I chatted with her last week. She was focused on the Department of Education's bills first. That's typically how they do it. So I haven't seen language yet. She said before Thanksgiving, so I've been trying not to hassle, but I'll be pleasantly pushy when I need to be if I haven't seen it, but, you know, by the end of next week or before the holiday. So when I, and when I have that, of course, I'll share it.
So we have just one bill. So on all these other things, are we drafting behind OSBA or?
Yes, with our colleagues and our associations.
Sorry, the Oregon School Boards Association. And then just some content. So last year, there's a fair amount of discussion about the difficulty that we had in hiring custodians, and there was some discussion that staff was going to advance some sort of modifications to the Civil Service Board to make it easier for us to, you know, have a full force of custodians, and I'm wondering what happened to that and why it's not in our agenda.
Yeah. So we had some initial discussions over the summer with the, with folks from HR, with Frank from Maintenance, to start that conversation. We talked with our partners at SEIU. It became pretty clear that this was going to be a little bit of a, not a, I won't say challenge in a negative way, just that it's going to take a little bit of time to work through it. And then about, probably, what, eight weeks ago, Claire convened a meeting where we talked about, maybe you could want to come up and tell me where we are with this now, because I lost it a little bit, but to chat through what can we do without legislating it to know where we can move first, because we may not need to do it first. And it's also, it's political, as is everything.
So when you read the administrative rules and the statute that apply to it, they've been in place for many decades, and they are not very specific. And so I think we have been operating in a way that we have always operated in, and when you go back and actually read through everything, we have much more leeway than we've been, maybe we've been just continuing to operate as we have for decades. So we're now engaging in process and conversations about how we're changing our hiring practice and our testing. We're still doing testing, but we are no longer, we're streamlining that process, so there won't be as many, it won't take so long to get custodians hired. So it is in process. It still needs to be worked on. It's whether it's, there is the union component compared to, it seems like we should first utilize all of our way of going through the Civil Service Board that we have in place as well as the rules that we have in place and see what we can accomplish that way.
So you think we may be able to fill out the custodian ranks without having to...
I'm hoping to do a better job of filling the openings without a legislative change.
Can I, just to follow up on that. Am I correct in thinking that this is a statute with the universe of one? It applies only to PPS?
Yes.
I object to that in principle.
Yes.
And I think...
Well, it's by population of the city.
Right. And conveniently, the threshold is placed in such a way that it is a universe of one.
Correct.
That also means there's a universe of one that wants to, that would want to change it. So if we don't try and change it, then we have to pick another alternative.
So we have streamlined the hiring process, and we are getting more applicants because we've also, our HR leadership has, we have radio ads now. We have, promoting it in much different ways than we have in the past.
So Deputy Superintendent Hertz, will you report back to us on your progress on that front?
You bet.
So on the issue of advocating for measures that will help us to attract and retain a diverse workforce, so I've been in that business for almost 20 years now, and, you know, we've made little strides in Oregon, mostly through the colleges and universities that have done some external grant writing. But the states that have been on a better path and has really been successful have state, some state support, financial support. So as we advocate, I mean, we've talked for years at the state of what we can do to have some kind of a funding mechanism long-term.
Yeah. There's a lot of interest around this issue. I think you all saw what I sent, was it last week, from COSA, their proposal that they submitted to the Joint Student Success Committee has a workforce, educator workforce piece, and it's got, they're asking, there's a funding attachment. So what that looks like, again, you know, this is all worked out in the, once we get into the capital and, you know, everybody starts to shake the trees and talk about numbers, but that's definitely something that's being discussed.
So what I also know about educating particularly diverse pre-service teachers, to recruit them and retain them, takes substantial funding. I mean, there seems to be kind of a threshold, because most of them, you know, have families that are working. Again, looking at the data from other states would be helpful. If there's a threshold that seems to be the minimum amount of support that they need would be helpful. And then the second piece that I don't see here called out specifically, probably under supporting and advocating for increased academic outcomes for all students and close the opportunity gap for historically underserved, I might call out specifically, including students in special education, because we continue to have, you know, bigger gaps between our funding and the needs of our students with IEPs. It's important, I think, for the state to recognize the increased costs.
Yeah, thanks.
I want to be very careful what I might prompt you into saying, so let me just assert something, and then you can react as appropriate. I am hearing that the issue of statewide collective bargaining for teachers and a statewide teacher's contract have not gone away. I think those would be very bad for Portland Public and that we should have a plank in the platform saying that we oppose them. I see you nodding, so thank you. I'll offer an amendment then.
And I was, well, what I was going to say was, there is conversation about aligning contracts with the biennium. That's been, I've been hearing a lot about that or reading it and hearing it. So I think, again, that's another one that will, time will tell, but yes.
Do you want to offer some language?
I, two simple, oh, do you want it on the table?
You don't have a motion, second one.
Okay, I'll come back to you for language.
So as far as the resolution right now does not go into the specifics of the platform. It's just really a boilerplate endorsement of the platform. So I'm wondering, without regard to what you just raised, Paul, if, having seen no disagreement to including language on the second bullet, that would be including funding to increase the length of the school year, and then having seen no disagreement to Julie's language on the fourth to the last bullet, which would just be comma, including students in special education, just to, in a friendly way, amend the platform itself, and then we don't have to monkey with the resolution.
And then I would also, the second from the bottom, second from the last bullet, if you have support and will advocate for measures and funding that will help districts attract and retain a diverse workforce.
And measures and substantial funding?
Yeah, substantial, adequate at least.
Okay, before we vote, we're going to go back and do all the changes. Any other comments?
Yeah, so I'm now figuring out the syntax and language. If we're leading something, we're drafting our own bill. If we're supporting something, we're getting behind something that OSBA or COSA or some other larger body that we're a part of. Is that, because with the, it was kind of following up your point. Julie, I had also circled the increasing the diversity of our teaching force as a key issue, and why aren't we leading on that? Why aren't we pushing something more specific?
There's a lot of, a lot of these are already out there. So it's not too late. We can be more, we can, I mean, there's no, we're not prevented from initiating a bill later on if we want to. But there is, a lot of this is being led by our coalition partners.
Okay. Yeah, no, I understand that, but I think that is just hugely important.
Yes, it is.
I had the same question about custodians, and that's been answered. And I just got to say, to me, Anna, I'm on record on this, continue to be on record. I really don't support Measure 98. I think school districts should have been doing it anyway and certainly had the power to do everything in 98, and it's kind of shameful that some districts had to be forced into it through a funding mechanism. I see this as a, Measure 98 as a carve-out of the full, you know, it's not money that came from, you know, dropped out of heaven. It's part of the education budget that got carved out. But political reality, it is what it is, and I'll live with what's here. But political reality, it is what it is, and I'll, I'll live with what's here.
Thanks.
But I, I, I don't see it as a model for going forward in the future.
I would just like to wholeheartedly support Director Bailey's comments, and to point out that if the money that went to fund Measure 98 in this biennium had just gone into the state school fund, that would have brought Portland public another one and a half million dollars, which they shorted us, in the implementation of Measure 98. Distribution of that money was done very inequitably. So lo and behold, if Measure 98 hadn't gone through, we could have had another 15 CTE teachers in this district. How about that? I'm a little bitter about it.
Should we go back to the language for-
So, well, wait a minute, before we move on to other language, does somebody want to offer some language to get to the point that Directors Bailey and Anthony just made?
Actually, I don't, I wouldn't support that. I was going to go the opposite direction of having full funding for ballot measure in 98. It was approved by the voters, and I think that they sent a clear message of valuing this, and it was a way in which voters sent a message of what, what they prioritized, college and career readiness, career technical education, policies around absenteeism, and support classes. And I would go, want to go in the opposite direction to ask to have it fully funded, which is fulfilling the will of the voters.
I absolutely agree and support that, and even on this very day, heard a lot of incredible statistics about the difference that it's making across the state, and how school districts are deploying it, so we are seeing it make a difference.
Okay, so, maybe I'll offer some language. So I, I, I think the broader point that Director Bailey was making was that carving out money for specific mandates at the expense of-
It's a slippery slope.
District flexibility in the use of funds, and, you know, sort of limiting the ability of districts to, to provide for the full spectrum of education. I might offer a friendly amendment to, one, two, three, four, the fourth bullet point on the first page under funding. Currently reads, "PPS opposes unfunded mandates that do not include the requisite funding to successfully implement." The mandate, I might amend that to, "PPS opposes both unfunded mandates and carve-outs." So maybe, "PPS opposes," carve-out is kind of a jargony terminology. Do we want to-
Target investments?
Yeah. Well, no, targeted investment sounds like a, like a good thing.
Like a good thing.
Yeah.
Well, that's the point.
Well, except, except in implementation, it often turns out to have unintended negative consequences.
Maybe we should just issue an edict that the legislature should do what the voters pass, in terms of additive funding, which is the voters' intent.
The voters passed Measure 5 and Measure 47, Measure 50 as well. There you go.
All right, let me think about language. Paul, you had something else.
Yes, on the subject, subjects, plural, statewide collective bargaining and a statewide teacher's contract. I would propose two sentences, and I think they need to be very pedantically broken out into two, because I do hear people conflating one with the other. "PPS opposes statewide collective bargaining for teachers and paraeducators," period. "PPS opposes a statewide teacher's contract," period.
So that's introducing a really big concept into our legislative agenda that I don't think we've had a discussion about, nor know necessarily-
We don't know what the, what that's going to even look like yet.
Or if it's going to manifest.
But I guess my question for us to take a definitive position on something which we haven't had a discussion, I'd be interested in our labor negotiators' point of view, the superintendents. Just adding it in without, so, I mean, obviously, you can offer the amendment, but I, it's not something that I would be, at this point, it's not a just immaterial-
I agree, I think there's a difference between kind of wordsmithing and adding in a whole new policy without knowing yet what's out there.
And having had absolutely no conversation on the matter.
Well, we can have a conversation now. And this has been floated, I heard about it first last, last July, from one of the co-chairs of the Joint Student Success Committee.
It's up to you as a board. I have not seen anything, I couldn't even share anything with you, any proposal or any, anything in writing. That's, that's official beyond what's just being tossed around.
And, and while this is a broad expression of our priorities, there are also potentially many issues that could emerge during the session that we will want and need to respond to with due consideration. So just because something is not included in our platform that we're endorsing now does not mean that it restricts our ability to-
Absolutely.
-take a stance or direct our lobbyists moving forward.
There will be more opportunities, and there will be regular updates. You'll know a lot more about what's coming when we know what's coming.
Well, that I hear, this is certainly coming. It's coming with the full-throated endorsement of some statewide business interests, and it's done, as so many education-related bills and issues are in this state, without any thought of Portland public at all. It's an attempt to use a backdoor to bring down first costs, and healthcare costs, and wages. And the impact of it, if they impose anything, like what they have in nine-tenths of the district in this state, is that we are going to end up hemorrhaging teachers to Washington, where they're much better paid, and where they don't have to put up with this nonsense. So I think it's very much in our interests to see that it doesn't happen. Also, it's liable to be yet another backdoor way for the legislature to attack our Health and Welfare Trust. And that's going to have an enormous fiscal impact on Portland public, and it's going to absolutely torpedo our labor relations, because forcing our people into OWEB is going to really hurt them in ways that go far beyond their pocketbooks.
Paul, OWEB meeting.
OWEB is the statewide teachers' health insurance program.
Oregon Educator Benefit Board.
Can I, I've got a couple more questions, can I continue on? So there's been a fair amount of discussion about the funding, or lack thereof, or inadequate funding for TSPC, which is the Teacher Standard and Practice Commission, which plays a really important role in the state of licensing our teachers. And the discussion has been about how underfunded they are, some of their investigations, or when they're reviewing things, take a long time. It's my understanding that we often have people on paid administrative leave for a long period of time while that's happening. And I thought what I'd heard was that there was support for increasing the funding for TSPC, and I'm not seeing anything in the legislative agenda, and I'm wondering why that is.
So we, we don't have anything included in our draft, our concept language, about adding investigators. Senator Roblin's bill does. TSPC is a fee-based agency, so they, and they just increased licensing fees, I think, in 2015, so I don't think there's an appetite to do that. So it would have to be a separate funding of, I don't know actually what the mechanics would be, but that the draft that, that Roblin has submitted includes adding investigators specifically at TSPC.
Right, but why wouldn't we call that out in our legislative agenda?
Well, we do, in the-
I mean, in a very generic way.
Bullet point on the, well, yeah, but most of this is pretty generic.
I think, I think there's, there are a lot of things that we could add to this. The direction I got early on was to keep it, not short and sweet, because we don't want to, you know, leave anything out that's not important, but to keep it pretty high level and focused. And so if you want to change that direction, we might not want to vote right now.
Or what might be helpful is if we could reference other documents that we have been working on. For example, the, our work plan for the implementation of the Whitehurst investigation specifically calls out reform to TSPC as a legislative strategy.
And there are, there are included in our bill, which is pretty, you know, on the document, it specifically talks about educator misconduct, which is the Whitehurst recommendation.
Right. So maybe we could reference those, or even in the bullet point around capital investment, we could reference some of our-
Sure.
...statements around support for capital investment.
Okay, I'd like to offer an amendment around the Measure 98. If we're going to have something like that in there, then we need a clause to say that it would be equitably distributed to school districts.
Is that equally or equitably?
Equitably. I'm at equity here, right?
So I guess the question, the question I would ask is, why did other school districts get greater funding? Is it they had, I mean, PPS's poverty rate is dropping, and is it that other districts had greater rates of poverty? Or they don't have a local option, we're quite blessed with the generosity of our taxpayers? I, I don't know why we received, why-
I'm talking about a general principle here, you're talking specifics.
I guess I, I don't know what, I'm trying to think what, how you're, we're defining equity, and I guess I wouldn't want to know why the inequity occurred before I'm taking, we're taking money from a different district.
So the state, the state school fund already through ADM has adjustments for poverty, has adjustments for special education, and a number of other factors.
I guess, I don't have any problem with the resolution, because the state probably would say we already do it equitably. By their definition, that's why I was trying to get at, is what's the difference in how they end up where they were versus maybe our definition of how it seems to us.
Maybe some data would help with that.
And I, I think the organizing principle for the state school fund is equality in funding, with some, with some relatively small-
Yeah.
-adjustments based on demographic information. But, but the principle is equal funding, because we are, they are certainly not taking into consideration cost of living disparities across the state. So.
We have a resident expert.
Yes.
My body language in my chair must have been giving me away. So it is considered an equity formula. It has weightings for, first, for just a student, you have a full weighting. If you're a special ed student, you have a second weighting, so you'd be a 2.0. If you have a, if you're an English language learner, you have a half a weighting, so you'd be worth 1.5. There's poverty weightings are .25.
This is the ADM, correct?
Yes.
Which is the-
Average daily membership.
Right, so this is the state school fund, how, how it weights funding, and there's, as Director Moore said, there's small differences between districts.
Well, when you compare, you know, I've traveled across the country quite a bit, and when you compare it to other states, ours nationally is considered an equity formula, rather than an equal formula. And part of that is, so compare it to Illinois, for instance. When they have a, whatever property taxes they collect in their district, they get to keep it, so they have the most impoverished districts having the lowest amount of funding.
Which is where, where we were in 1990.
Right. So because we're not, it's not by, our property taxes are pooled together statewide, and then we're paid by the number and type of students we have, rather than each district, an equal formula, everyone would be keeping their own property taxes, rather than an equity formula, which puts it all in one big pot, and then redistributes based on the type of students you have.
There's also, small school districts get a bump as well.
There is, there's teacher experience, small school, rural high school, I think that's it. Foster children.
I think we've got to make a bump from teacher experience.
Teacher experience. The average of your district compared to the state average teacher experience.
In 1997, there was a pretty extensive PPS push to get a cost of doing business added to the, would reflect the greater costs of the metro area, and it just had a constitutional problem that there wasn't enough legislators in the metro area to get that added to the formula. I mean, making a change to the formula, I think, is-
Really tough.
A very, very difficult, but there was, there was a run at it, and I think they did, for Portland, they tried to make some other adjustments. That's the year that we got the desegregation money, the gap bond money. We have teachers with poor experience, so we weight their well, and I think one of the things that has impacted PPS in terms of funding through the formula is that we have less poverty now than we've had in the past because of the housing prices, and it's moving into the far eastern districts.
Our ELL weightings and our poverty have gone down.
So we have, do we, any other comments or suggestions?
Couple more questions, sorry. So in the third to the last bullet, it says, "PPS supports increased access for high school students to high-quality post-secondary programs with seamless transferability of credits earned." Is this the-
The dual credit.
Or is it the, I know last legislative session, there was a bill that would have required the public universities to accept-
Yes.
-a, like an AP score of X, or an IB score of something else. Is this, is that what this is referring to?
Yeah.
So I think it would be, I mean, this is more getting into the details of legislation, but I know from talking to individuals in higher ed, that there's concern that the courses, some of the AP courses don't exactly match what are the basic courses at some of our public universities, and the concern that if they get automatically waived in and the syllabuses aren't the same, that you will have students missing sort of a building block year, because they get waived in and it's not the same syllabus, it's a requirement, and therefore, they're not ready for the 200 series of something. So I, I think we should be thoughtful and talk to our higher ed partners, especially the-
Totally agree.
-faculty, senators of the universities have a really strong point of view about this.
They do. They do. I think the, the reason that this is high level is to note that this is an issue that K-12 is working on. This is not something we're going to be able to do in a vacuum, we're going to have to work with our partners in higher ed, and so I, noted.
Can I add something?
So I've been, since our OEIB days, continuing to be involved in this work around the dual credits. And the other part that is a part of this conversation is, how do we make sure that the courses are the same courses and the assessments are the same? So you may remember the different promises. Western Oregon in Willamette Promise used the model of using PLCs, where college instructors or professors were in the same room with high- Western Oregon and Willamette Promise, um, used the model of using PLCs where college instructors or professors were in the same room with high school teachers, developing the syllabus, developing the course, and developing the assessments. There were other, um, universities who said, "We don't want to do that method," um, and didn't want to participate. So there were those universities like Western that participated, were closely with the teachers, uh, there was a lot learned. Um, high school teachers increased rigor sometimes, and, uh, professors got more information about why students have some gaps when they get there. Um, I believe that is the model that is being recommended with this. Is that those courses will be developed with professors and high school teachers in a PLC to determine that course. And so there will have to be some way of determining whoever gives credit around those courses is participating in some way in that development.
So is that more dual credit versus the AP and the IB, because IB has these-
Can I make a suggestion? This is deep in the weeds.
Yeah.
Um, the intention behind this legislative agenda is to be a high-level kind of statement of principle, to, to guide work as, as we get into the session. I think we can take these kinds of questions offline and deal with them at a later date.
I agree, I think the intent was to make sure if students do take a class that's commensurate, that they couldn't end up at an institution and said, "Sorry, we don't agree, and so we're not even going to look at it, and you can count it as an elective credit instead of that course." Because some students were having to take the same course again-
Right.
-for credit in that area, so, yeah. The high level is just making sure it's on the side of the students.
Okay, so, so any other high-level questions that we need to?
So, just a commentary, and it is around the language of PPS having a moral obligation. Um, some of the issues that are raised are actually sort of city and county, um, obligations, and I think, uh, I think Courtney's going to do a great job, and we've got an excellent, um, external, um, contract lobbyists, but I think there's going to be a limit. Um, they're going to need to use their political capital. Um, I think maybe a better way to approach it, instead of, um, using the word that we have a moral obligation to be lobbying for that at the state level, is for us to be having a lot of these issues, as Director Bailey has mentioned, um, having conversations with city and county partners about, um, the environment and, and sort of supporting services for students and families. But I, um, am concerned that, um, we may lose focus on what is our key fiduciary responsibility, which is providing an education experience, and that's not at all dismissing the foundational items. I just think, um, we need to be encouraging, um, the other partners, whose governmental partners, whose responsibility that is, to take on that responsibility.
I think the key issue here is that we don't want to get into, I mean, and we've seen this in the past in Oregon, where there's been a fight between education and social services, when there needs to be an alliance. We want to state clearly, I think, that we're all on the same team, that it's all important. We saw from the Secretary of State's audit, as, as Director Anthony has pointed out several times, that, what was it, four out of the five key items affecting, uh, graduation rates were not education per se, but those social determinants here. So, I like this statement, I want to keep it in.
And I think also, it doesn't, um, it doesn't say we have a moral obligation to advocate for that. It says that on the ground, our, our teachers and our building personnel feel morally obligated to respond to students and are responding to these needs of students. So it's saying, "Let's advocate for support for this work that we're already doing."
Director Anthony?
Thank you. I'm a third-generation Roosevelt Democrat. I have never voted for a Republican. And I want you to know that, because I want you to know, it takes a hell of a lot for me to speak the words, "I agree with Dennis Richardson." The Secretary of State pegged the top three barriers to high school graduation in this state as lack of access to affordable housing, lack of access to pediatric health care, and child hunger. That's what we have to tackle, and I think it's perfectly fine to bear down on the city and the county and everybody else who's falling on, down on the job and failing Oregon's children. But this has been going on for 29 years, and it hasn't worked yet. So I think we need to form that alliance Director Bailey's talking about.
And, I'll just pile on a little. If we increase funding for K-12 education, and it comes at the expense of the social determinants of education and health, mental health services, physical health services, oral health services for kids, uh, anti-poverty programs, housing, and all other investments to support the well-being of students and families, we might as well burn the money. We will not improve outcomes for students. So, we need not only more money for K-12 education, we need more money, period, for everything. Everything in this state is underfunded. All essential services have been underfunded for almost 30 years. And I think it is important for PPS to put a stake in the ground and make it very clear that we at least are going to advocate for fundamental tax reform to produce huge increases in revenues. Not tiny little increments to make somebody feel better and throw a little bit of it at K-12. We need to completely restructure the tax system in this state in order for our people to thrive. So I'm in favor of keeping this in. Okay. Um, anything else? Okay, you, you wanted to add some-
I think we already did.
-language about the school year. Okay, did, did you get all the changes that were?
So I just want to talk about the governance piece here is a little less than straightforward.
Yes, the resolution does not formally attach this document as an exhibit. So one path is to amend 5750 to reference as Exhibit A this document with voted-on amendments as you go. Otherwise, I'm not sure if you vote on this without that attached, it'll be clear what you're voting on. I welcome other approaches, but-
No, absolutely, because that's what it is, an endorsement of this platform.
Right.
Okay, so first thing we have to do is move it and second it. And then we'll amend it, right? Okay, so, do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Director, uh, Director Bailey moves, Director Anthony seconds, um, okay. Do we have an amendment?
I suggest that an amendment is offered to incorporate this document as Exhibit A, which would amend the resolution language to say, "The board adopts the 2019 state legislative platform attached here too as Exhibit A," which is really the amendment.
Okay.
I think that's the first step before you then amend the platform itself.
Okay, Ms. Yousum, did you get that language?
Well, it needs to be offered by one of you.
Um, can I offer that?
Uh, you're suggesting that we, um, offer the legislative platform as written, as an amendment, and that the quasi-friendly prior amendments don't fly, that we'll need to address those in a more formal way.
I think you will, in part because it's not clear, I think, in the record, in some instances, what the exact language is, and in other instances, whether there are sufficient votes.
I agree, I agree.
Okay. Okay, so, so, um, we need to move and second the amendment, right? Okay, so, um, I, can I move?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I move the amendment to stipulate that we're attaching this as Exhibit A. Um, do you have a second? Second? Okay, Director Constanz seconds, um.
I would vote on that amendment.
Now we vote, okay, so-
Discussion or vote, and then vote.
Discussion?
So it's the pre, the pre-amended version that we're attaching?
Okay, so the original document?
Yes.
As, as posted, okay. And then we can amend that if we want, okay.
Yes.
So, um, where are we in the process?
You need discussion and a vote.
Discussion, any discussion on this-
The amendment attaching.
The original platform as Exhibit A.
Right, on the attachment. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Any abstentions? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so the amendment is passed unanimously. Um, okay, now we go to the underlying-
Exhibit A.
Exhibit A, thank you. Okay, so we had a number of suggestions for changes, we're going to take each one of those separately and vote on them. Right?
Uh, yes. So, I move that we amend the Exhibit A, the legislative platform, um, by, um, adding a comma at the end of the second bullet, and concluding that bullet with, "Including funding to increase the length of the school year." And Julie, would you like me to also add what we just, um, and in the same amendment, I would like to, um, amend the fourth to the last bullet by changing the period to a comma after underserved students, and adding "including students in special education."
Okay, do we have?
And, and there was one more, which was-
Can I friendly amend, "Students receiving special education services"?
Sure, "Students receiving special education services." And then the third one was, um, on the second to the last bullet point, change that to read, "PPS supports and will advocate for measures that will help, PPS supports and will advocate for measures and funding that will help districts attract and retain a diverse workforce reflective of the students they serve."
Okay, we have a proposal for an amendment, right? Do we have a second? Okay, Director Bailey, seconds. Moved by Director Constanz, seconded by Director Bailey. Any discussion on those changes? Okay, we'll take a vote, um.
All, all of the things that then are being submitted.
Those, those, those-
For this amendment.
Were changes that were just offered. Okay? Okay, all in favor, say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Any abstentions? Student representative?
Yes.
Okay, so, the amendment, the wording amendments are accepted unanimously. Are there any other changes to the language?
Did you want to address the issue about adding the term "set aside" or "carve out" in the fourth bullet?
Okay.
Not in this amendment.
Okay.
No, no, that amendment-
That's, that's already passed, that's done. Okay, I'll offer it, and we'll see, one, two, three, four. So, fourth bullet point. PPS opposes, um, budgetary carve-outs for mandated uses and unfunded mandates that do not include requisite funding. So the new language would be budgetary carve-outs for mandated uses.
Second.
Okay, sec-
Do you have discussion on that?
Well, let me just, okay, so Director Bailey, seconded. I, I move, Director Bailey, seconded, discussion, good.
So, I think that potentially could be an unwise thing to have in this, because almost all the discussions to date, um, including with most of the education players, is the way you, there, there's not going to just hand over $2 billion to schools and say, "Spend it however you want." Is that, um, it likely will be a series of targeted investments, because that is what the general public is going to support, that's what the polling shows. And I say, this is broadly accepted, is that's how, like, we may not like it, but I guess if we put it in there and that's how we get it, are we going to turn down the money because it's attached to something? Because that is probably how we're going to get it.
And that, in fact, was called out in the, um, language from the Student Success Committee about how they were going to-
Accountability.
-advocate in the legislature, um, around targeted investments and accountability.
Director Anthony?
I think it's very important that this board take a position opposing that position, because we've got many, many, many years of experience with the legislature that shows us that their judgment on this is absolutely terrible. If you want to talk about the will of the voters, well, it's the will of the voters that put us seven little pinheads up here to make the decisions about how we're going to spend the money. We shouldn't be allowing, certainly the legislature, to second-guess our judgment, our superintendent's judgment, our staff's judgment on this. And I think we need to say that really firmly, really loudly, and over and over again.
I would be supportive of any narrowing of the agenda that makes sure to include high-quality early education, early literacy, social-emotional development, secondary redesign, arts education, gifted and talented education, and enhancement of special education services. So as long as they're narrowed to some of those areas, I think we're okay.
You can figure out how to spend it.
So, and, uh, dare we say anything about our maintenance backlog? Or the state of our facilities? I mean, it, it goes across the board.
So I'm in favor of the legislature doing its job and allowing the rest of us to do our jobs. If the legislature would actually do what they were elected to do, I don't think we'd be having these arcane discussions about pennies. I think we'd be, we'd have enough money that, that we could actually, um, allow individual school districts to, to allocate resources, um, in, in the most logical and rational way to serve its students. I, I don't think the legislature is an educator, either collectively or individually, for the most part. And I don't think they ought to be telling us what to do. And, and yes, I understand that the politics are such that we will almost certainly get money in the form of mandated carve-outs, um, but I don't have to like it. And I think we have the right and the obligation to say out loud that we think that is not a wise use of legislative authority.
So I'm curious, Director Brem Edwards, what, what do you think one of those, for example, or Director Constanz, what do you think one of those directions might look like?
Let me just look down at the Student Success, and I'll say, um, this is Republican, Democrats, labor unions that are saying this, um, I mean, if, one, one of the-
I'm asking for a specific.
Right, so it could be 180-day school year, or-
Pre-K.
Pre-K.
Or a fully funded measure 98, or-
And the, the reality is-
Social-emotional help.
Legislators are listening to the, the public as well, and usually the public's response is because they're seeing something not happening. And that's why I think we end up with targeted investments. Um, all the polling I saw after measure 97 is, one of the big, um, issues with it was, where it, you know, pretty much lost roundly all over the state, was that one of the- it, you know, pretty much lost roundly all over the state, was that one of the reasons people gave when you ask why they voted no was that it didn't... They didn't see the connection to some tangible thing that they wanted addressed. And the fear was, it was gonna go to Salem into the big black hole, and they weren't gonna see something. So, I'm not saying I like the legislature telling us what to do, I'm just speaking to the reality, and I think it's probably the best way. So, I think it's an easier, maybe a better approach, since we're not gonna be driving the ship, is, like, if there's a wave, you know, catch it. And so, like, what is it, what would we like them to fund? So if we're gonna get it, let's be specific about things that we would want the money to go to. But I think us saying, just give us, you know, schools giving us a billion dollars and, you know, we're gonna decide, is not a politically viable position for us to take. And I think it will result in us not getting money, actually, if we don't support some sort of targeted investment. So that's the danger. You could say, we don't, you know, we want it without any strings, and it's like, well, you're not, you're gonna get a lot less, 'cause that's what we feel our constituents are telling us they're willing to give. So, it's...
I would also like to take a stab at answering Director Bailey's question. Oregon Business Industry so far has been perfectly clear that they are willing to give us another $600 million, but that they want that to go exclusively to early childhood education and to postgraduate job training. And they have described K-12 as the pig at the trough. So, yeah, I think if we don't come out and advocate strongly for full funding of the QEM with no strings, I think we're gonna end up with nothing.
An alternative approach is to say, if Portland Public Schools had X more money, here's how we would spend it.
Right.
Here's what you would get for those dollars.
And it could be quite different from what Salem needs, quite different from what Yonkala needs, quite different from what Ontario needs.
And I would argue that in any advocacy around revenue reform or increased allocations, that's exactly what we're doing. We're saying, this is what we need it for, and we're backing it up with data.
Okay.
You know, and that's, to me, the craziest thing about Measure 98 is, local voters have elect school boards that could have been, I mean, just like Portland Public did nothing around CTE for years, and then, what, three, four years before Measure 98 passed, started ramping up CTE all on its own, within its own budget.
Okay. I'm gonna call it. So this has already been moved and seconded, right? Okay, so, let's take a vote. All those in favor of the suggested wording?
Can you please read that again?
PPS opposes budgetary carve-outs for mandated uses and unfunded mandates that do not include the requisite funding to successfully implement the mandate. Okay? Okay? All right, all those in favor, say yes? Yes? All those opposed, say no?
No.
No.
That was three? Okay. Well, let me see if I heard it right. So, no, no, no? You were a yes? Okay. Okay, so, any abstentions? Student representative?
Yes.
Okay. So I believe this passes by a vote of four to three. With student...
With just the, right, the... It's just the amendment.
Just that amendment? Yeah. Okay. Okay, are there any other changes? I think I'm gonna call this, because we are way over.
Yeah, so, I'd like to come back at a later date around Measure 98 language and get some research and data, and so that we're... So that I know what I'm talking about.
I'm sorry, really quickly, point of order.
Yes, we'll have... Okay, any other? Okay, so... So we have an amended Resolution 5750. Is there any public comment?
Yes, we have two. Rebecca Hanafin and Elizabeth Israel Davis.
Hi, my name is Rebecca Hanafin, H-A-N-N-A-F-I-N. I am a member of the PPS Dyslexia Advocacy Group. We believe that the proposed legislative agenda is strong, but it could be more specific. As PPS steps up its support of children with dyslexia, the biggest challenge is increasing teacher training and awareness. Having two dyslexia advisors in every elementary building doesn't change the fact that most teachers have no idea how to help their dyslexic students. Kids in middle school and high school are on their own. My son was diagnosed with dyslexia in first grade. Every year, I go to school in the first weeks of classes, and I teach my son's teachers how to teach him. I explain assistive technology, I send links to articles and seminars about structured literacy, I remind them not to make him read out loud in class. I introduce them to his tutor so that they can work together. I should not have to do this. Teacher credentialing programs should be teaching our teachers how to teach struggling readers. Scientifically proven dyslexia curriculum has existed for decades. The International Dyslexia Association's knowledge and practice standards for teachers of reading are used at universities around the world. University teaching programs should be using these standards. In 2015, the Oregon Legislature passed a law requiring teacher credentialing programs to provide instruction on dyslexia and other reading difficulties. In 2017, the Oregon Teachers Standards and Practices Commission adopted final dyslexia instruction program standards. Oregon's teaching universities immediately banded together to push a legislative amendment that gave them the option of delaying compliance with the standards until 2020. Essentially, they said, "We don't wanna do this right now," and the legislature said, "Okay." My fourth grader will be in sixth grade by the time all of Oregon's teaching universities start teaching teachers how to help him. By the time that first batch of teachers find their first jobs, my fourth grader will be halfway through high school. Last spring, the PPS Dyslexia Advocacy Group met with a senior PPS administrator who told us there is a huge problem with new teachers coming into PPS needing professional development on foundational skills, specifically with regard to teaching reading. There is no reason for PPS to be wasting money training teachers to teach struggling readers. It is completely consistent with the district's legislative agenda to seek increased funding for teacher training, hire only fully-trained teachers, and insist that teaching universities move quickly to implement existing dyslexia instruction standards. Much of what helps students with dyslexia will help other struggling readers, ESL students, and those without reading differences. All votes rise with the interventions needed for students with dyslexia. As the largest school district in the state, PPS should be challenging other districts, the Oregon Legislature, and Oregon's universities to ensure that every single teacher in every Oregon classroom has these essential skills. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Israel Davis, I-S-R-A-E-L hyphen D-A-V-I-S. And I'm here to ask you to prioritize lobbying in support of state legislation in regards to teacher training and reading instruction. Currently, teachers are entering the classroom with little to no understanding of how to teach the fundamental skills of reading. The burden and cost for this training then falls on our district, and even worse, our students and families. A few years ago, as Rebecca has already stated, legislation was passed that made me hope this would change. HB 242, which became ORS 342.147, originally required educator prep programs to align their curricula and content with international reading standards. It technically still does, but it was stripped of any impact it might have had when our universities successfully lobbied to be able to decide for themselves if they are in compliance. So I'm basically asking you the same thing, not quite as eloquently as Rebecca. PPS has a lot of power to be able to influence this, and not only for students who have dyslexia, but for all students. I am a reading specialist in PPS, and anything that I have learned, I've had to seek out myself. I have a master's degree from Lewis and Clark, I have a reading endorsement, and I had to do all this myself and find it myself. Our universities should be preparing teachers so that they come into the classrooms knowing how, and I think PPS is a strong force to lobby for that to happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanna say that as amended this platform, which we included the amendment around "including students receiving special education services," absolutely, we will carry forward your recommendations about dyslexia as part of that, and that is still an ongoing discussion at the state. So, thank you both for your work.
So, does that cover it?
It doesn't cover what our second... What Ms. Israel Davis was referring to around general reading instruction curricula.
But...
We just have a very general statement about strongly supporting measures that enhance the ability of PPS to advance student achievement.
Yeah.
That's a standalone clause. It's not very specific, as they pointed out. And, but this is a, you know, it's like, this is a generic statement. Our platform is generic, and I... This is kind of unsatisfactory.
Okay.
In that sense. So I don't know where to... I don't know quite what to do.
Yeah, I don't know where it fits in the legislative agenda either, but I do wanna say to our two speakers, it's an issue that I've been calling out exactly like that, being part of the university and kind of knowing the politics behind that. And I have also spoken at length to administrators and human resources that we do need to have certain competencies that teachers are coming out of the training programs with. But I don't know that that is something that's for the legislature, or something to work with our university partners with. And I'm happy to continue that conversation.
I was just gonna say, I've been in touch with Lisa Lyon about the challenge with teaching teachers how to teach to kids who are dyslexic or have been diagnosed, probably by their families because they had to pay for it, which is the challenge we heard about earlier. So, I'm not sure, it's probably too specific to include here, but something that we can continue talking about, and I know Gretchen mentioned to me this issue, so, we're talking internally.
And as I said, I will continue to advocate for the training and investment in that area.
And I'm happy to come to your meetings, and I've talked to her about that, too, to keep in touch about what these issues look like, so.
Thanks, Courtney. Okay.
Call a question.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second for the amended attachment A?
Yes. So you had an... You've already voted on each of the amendments.
Yeah, we voted on it, but don't we...
It's already been moved and seconded.
It was the original overarching piece, so you're ready to vote?
Ready to vote on the Resolution 5750.
I have a final statement.
Okay, go ahead.
Prior to voting, while there's no potential or actual conflict of interest under ORS Chapter 244, I'm providing notice that the entity that employs me will be engaged in the 2019 Oregon legislative process, and I may be involved in work relating to individual legislation. I also wanna just explain, I'm gonna be a no vote on this, and it's not necessarily the substance. I don't think you ever agree to everything, it's more the process. About three weeks ago, we did have a general conversation in August about it, and three weeks ago, we were told there'd be a work session in November, and then a vote in December. And we all received this, although I asked for it last week, when I noticed it was on the agenda, we didn't receive it till Friday, so, which I don't think gave most board members an opportunity to weigh in prior to it getting in its current form, and also, nor did allow the public. And frankly, you know, I applaud the two people who must have been watching the website over a three-day weekend to see that something had been posted. But certainly, I don't believe we had adequate opportunity for the public to weigh in on a pretty important legislative agenda. So I'll be a no.
Okay, ready to vote? All in favor of Resolution 5750 as amended, please say yes?
Yes.
All opposed, say no?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? Student Paesler?
Yes.
Okay, the resolution passes by a vote of five to two. Okay. Now we are much delayed, but I'd like to ask Kevin Spellman to present the Bond Accountability Report.
Welcome.
Chair Moore, Directors, Superintendent. Before we get into the report, I wanted to just remind you all that the committee's been operating a little shorthanded recently. Both Louis Fontenot and Willie Paul left the committee this year, and they were both... Had been both on the committee since its founding in 2012. And so we miss them dearly. However, we now have three proposed replacements: Karen Wayland, Dana White, and Dick Steinbruggi. Karen and Dana are here today. And we also... Tom Peterson's here with me, his term is up, and you'll be considering his reappointment. And assuming that passes, Tom and I will be, then be, the only two remaining original. So we're frankly really looking forward to the new energy, new perspectives. We have a lot of challenges, as you know, so I think you've seen the bios of the nominees, and I think they can bring a lot to the table. We held our regular quarterly meeting on October 17, and at this time, it may seem like a fairly quiet time with the bond programs, but in fact, a whole lot is going on. There's construction work at Grant High School, the health and safety work covered by the 2017 bond continues, closeout of Phase III construction at Roosevelt is underway, and final closeout at Franklin and Fabian, and of course, planning and design work for Madison, Lincoln, Benson, and Kellogg. Before we get into the specifics of the program, we want to express concern about the situation at OSM. OSM has been short-staffed for some time now. Not its fault, it's a very challenging environment, but there are some key positions still unfilled, they're working hard to try and fill them, but nevertheless, there's an enormous load of work for a shorthanded organization. And now, on top of that, Dan Young has taken on management of facilities and asset management on an interim basis, but, and we understand the needs of the district, certainly, but our role is to understand the needs of the bond, and we're very concerned about that further spreading of managerial talent while these challenges are so potentially overwhelming. I'm gonna talk about the 2012 bond, then Tom will go into the 2017, and then I'll come back and attack a couple of other metrics. Generally, the work covered by 2012's proceeding well, there are still some significant challenges. Most obviously, I think, at Grant High School, considerable amount of work is being done there, and the current cost projections continue to show it will be completed within the current budget, but there's significant concern about that. The contingencies are shrinking fast, and it... it may well be that there'll be a need for additional funds to complete the project. Fortunately, the program overall still has some contingency funds that certainly should be sufficient to take care of any overrun there. As you know, the location for the softball field at Grant's been agreed on. Again, I want to be clear, though, that those costs are not included at this point in the cost projections for the bond. Closeout is still being addressed at Roosevelt, and there are some mechanical issues there, at least partly, probably due to the nature of phase construction. That can be a challenging thing. You may or may not know that Roosevelt High School project was honored with a Dumuro Award from Restore Oregon for recognizing, quote, "creativity, persistence, and craftsmanship in outstanding restoration projects." It's the only school project in the state to receive that recognition. Franklin's final cost will be right on its $113 million budget. Fabian's still expected to run over slightly, but as I said, there's still, we still expect the scope, total scope of the 2012 bond to be completed within the available funds.
Okay, regarding 217, obviously, the big issue with 217 is the budget. With $190 million unfunded, that's going to be a challenge throughout the course of this next few years. You know, we are, it's nice, though, that we finally got resolution on the budgets for Kellogg, Lincoln, and Madison. The challenge now will be, how do we make sure we stay within those budgets going forward? And you're going to hear a little bit more this after, or later this evening, on what the OSM's doing to try to do value engineering and maintain those, and we're pleased with what we saw, and hopefully you'll be, feel the same way. The, I want to comment, we did have a great presentation from the Madison team, and it was a good demonstration of the value of having your contractor onboard and working collaboratively to figure out how do you address these budget issues, and they presented a number of innovative ideas and techniques that were, helped keep the budget and yet still deliver what was intended. So that was very encouraging to see that. However, we're still waiting for the next round of estimates, and so hopefully, we'll still be in line, but that was encouraging. There are also, one of the advantages of that type of contracting is that you have some flexibility in how you go about procuring it. So they're going to do a strategy that we did quite often at the port, which is where we bring in some of these key and challenging subcontractors on early during preconstructions, so you can negotiate and work with those folks, and they can also help with some of the VE. And so I think that will be a good thing on Madison, and I suspect we'll probably see similar strategies on the other projects as they, as they develop. One point of, I guess, somewhat disappointing was that the Kellogg project, some of the overruns were due to the fact that we were doing specs and design concurrently, and it's like, we kind of thought, well, jeez, I thought we learned that lesson in 2012. Hopefully, that won't occur again in the future. That was disappointing, but it looks like they've got the budget established, so hopefully, we can manage it and stay within the budget going forward. The health and safety program is moving along. Two things maybe of note, it's, given the marketplace, it's challenging to try to get the workforce you need within constrained periods of time, so some of the summer work, we have this really fixed window, is different, and so the OSM may have to approach that a little differently and bite it off in a little smaller chunks that they know they can get it done without it being so challenging, but that's kind of the times we're in. And then, let's see, what else did I want to bring up? Oh, along those same lines, we think it's important that there's good communication on how we're proceeding with the health and safety work. Obviously, that was a kind of an add-on to the bond measure in light of some of the, and so I think it's important that we share what we're doing and we're making progress with those issues. And then, the last thing I forgot to mention is regarding Benson, there's a similar situation going on, if you're probably aware, where we have a master plan going, we're on the design, but yet, we still don't know what the district's CTE program is, and it was a problem for us on Roosevelt, and, you know, we'd encourage you to try to make sure that gets resolved so that the Benson program isn't adversely impacted by a change down the road related to a district-wide CTE program. And that's all I have to share, so.
As you know, we track a few other metrics as well, and the first one is equity. Certified business participation of the two programs combined is now at 17 percent, still not at the 18 percent aspirational goal, but it's certainly been creeping up, and we're optimistic about that. Apprenticeship trade hours are 25 percent above the 20 percent goal. I know this is of particular interest to you, the new performance audit team is up and running. They met with numerous stakeholders three or four weeks ago now, including representatives of the BAC, and we're looking forward to working with them as they go forward. And they're, just so you know, they're very clear that their Phase I work is at your direction to focus on the estimates for the 2012 bond. We've really skipped a year of performance auditing here, so there is no, at this point, there's no, quote, "audit" for the year 2018, which is mandated by the bond programs. There have, though, been cost audits on Franklin and Roosevelt, and we think that if OSM designates those as the program audits, that that would satisfy the bond mandate.
Thank you for raising that important compliance issue. Something that...
It's not a question for you, but I just, we were down the presentation, I'd be interested to know how we missed an audit that was required. Again, it's not a question for you.
Okay, well, I think, I think I can answer it, at least in terms of the process, the procurement of, we had a new performance auditor, so I think the intent, expectation was that the performance audit would satisfy the mandate from the bonds, but with a new auditor and procurement, et cetera.
There's a lag.
Right, right. So, in summary, 2012 bond is still on track to meet its final scheduled goal and stay within the program budget, and no surprise to you, major challenges remain on the 2017 bond. Thank you.
So I just want to just clarify the point about the missed audit, so I guess, the refinement is not necessarily that we missed an audit, it's being replaced with something else?
That's, that's our recommendation, yes.
Is that the recommendation, or would the deputy superintendent, would that meet the obligation? I hate to think that we'd be missing an audit, the, missing an audit.
I'm not understanding the missing audit.
Each of, each of the bond programs in the bond measure has a commitment to an annual audit. It's not specific about performance audit, financial audit, or whatever. And from the outset of the 2012 bond, the performance audit was an annual one and certainly satisfied that requirement. There was no performance audit for 2018.
But there was a financial audit.
There was a financial audit, cost audits on Roosevelt and Franklin, and since that, those projects constitute such a large part of the expenditure, it seems like that would qualify.
So it's not really a missed audit, it's just a, a different audit?
That's what we think, but we think you need to, it needs to be designated as satisfying the requirement.
It's one thing for BAC to say they recommend that that would be the replacement, it's another thing for us to actually commit and, commit and do it, because then it's not a missed audit, if we've committed and done it.
Is that, is that OSM?
I would think OSM could just state that those audits satisfy the 2018 requirement.
So, I have a comment about something in your report that you didn't mention here tonight, which is disappointment that we have not seen external cost validations for these 2017 projects, and this is something that the BAC has repeatedly called for, this is something that I have called for, our board has discussed, partly because we know, I mean, you say Franklin came in on budget at $112 million, where, well, we're double that only four to five years later, which we know is more than just the escalation that we see in the market. So, we really need that information to be able to look at the cost per square foot that we're committing to these buildings, and to know whether that actually is, you know, what we have a justified right to expect in this market at this time, or whether there is something more we could be doing. And I, at the same time, I really appreciate the other materials in here around the granular value engineering exercises that go through every category of labor, every category of materials. So I know that, we are doing really extensive value engineering work, but I still think that those, some sort of external cost validation in comparison to other projects is something that I need to see to feel certain that we, we have done our due diligence on these, these new projects that are so significantly over budget. So, as far as you know, is there any movement in that direction, or, or maybe the deputies?
No, at least at, at the time of our meeting, there was, there was not. And OSM, you know, to be fair to them, they raised significant issues in getting that data so that it can be helpful, and those issues are certainly valid. But still, we have not been able to find any data that supports the current budgets for Lincoln and Madison, and that's our concern. It may be that, it may be that the level of quality that PPS is requiring is more than others.
But it's the same specs.
I know, yeah.
I mean, I want to say I really share that concern. It's something that we've been asking for, and I know it's, it's not easy, but if, if our team believes that it's impossible to come up with relevant comparisons, then I'd like to at least hear justification for that, but in the meantime, I'm, I'm really uncomfortable with the budgets that we have without being able to see those kind of direct comparisons.
I just have one question. So I noticed on the members that are retiring from the committee, and thank you for all your hard work. There was, appeared to be at least one diverse individual there, and as we're looking at equity issues, wondering about the makeup of the committee, and just reminding us to look at the differing voices on the committee as well, and our recruitment efforts.
Just to piggyback on that? I made some, several attempts to reach out to try to diversify, but unfortunately, it wasn't successful. And then, the two individuals, the two ladies that are here this evening, they were both folks that I told about, and so I reached out to them, and they both expressed an interest. So, it's something we considered, we made an attempt.
Great.
But, but it's not, maybe as diverse as we would have liked it to be.
And I would like to add that frankly, we don't feel that we necessarily have the right number of people, so if there are others, we certainly, we don't want it to be totally unwieldy, but we're not saying that we filled every slot, we're not interested in anybody else.
So, so maybe the community can, I was just putting a call out again, we would love more voices there. Thank you.
So, I just, just to piggyback on that, so I do want to applaud the candidates, they have deep technical expertise and really great, it's great that we have access to them, and I also applaud the gender diversity as well on the committee. I will say that currently, the charter has, says seven members. I think that we should be really clear that, that we can go beyond that, and actually, again, this is sort of, applies to any of our appointments, whether it's the, you know, Budget Advisory Committee, or any Board Appointed Committee that we really should be looking at through an equity lens, so we get, especially with our aspirational goals, that we'd like them to be, we'd like to realize them. The other thing that I, so I would hope that we could have maybe a sense of the board, that we would expand the charter beyond the seven members, so that we are able to get more diverse members from the community. The other thing I think we should just be mindful of is the geographic location. I think it's wonderful that we have people who don't live within the Portland Public Schools boundaries who want to help. I do think it's important, and we have a lot of talent here, that we continue to try and have the vast majority of the members being those that are, sort of have skin in the game and live within the boundaries of PPS, so that, because we're, we're all, anybody who's living within the boundaries is obviously paying taxes and understands the ramifications of all these votes, and when we're not at, not hitting our cost estimates, or not being able to, you know, manage the projects in a way that we would think we could, so I've asked for to just be cognizant of keeping sort of, not having a residency requirement, but just be mindful that we continue to have people who sort of live within the boundaries of PPS also serving on the committee. But I will say, I think the candidates that were recruited would be, be able to provide outstanding contribution going forward, and I want to thank them for agreeing to step up.
Can our new BAC members give us a wave, so we know who you are out there? All right, thank you very much, welcome.
One last question. So, under the Other Issues page, you have, "Goals for student engagement have been met for 2018, although every opportunity will be explored over the rest of the year," so can I just get an overview of what the student engagement was for this? Just because I just don't know.
It, it varies from almost one-on-one situations with internships, with, with PPS, also with the contractors and design teams, to, it varies from something as simple as that to regional, having students attend regional construction outreach efforts, and everything in between.
We, we've also, in the past, had individual teachers who introduce elements of the construction program into their daily curriculum, whether it's in applied, you know, geometry or something like that, where they bring the contractor in with a real-world problem that they're working on, and just try to integrate that way as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I would just like to ask Ms. Large whether, if we went beyond the seven members in the charter, do we have to formally do something, or are we allowed to just recruit more members?
Director Brim Ed was, that's, that's a really good question, because assuming you appoint those three, that would bring us to eight.
Correct.
So, yeah.
Oh, so.
We're already exceeding.
So you may not see me any.
So I, I will confess, I have not reviewed the charter, but my, my advice in the moment is that you would, you would amend the charter to reflect, to increase the capacity for the number of members. What is the, well, period?
So, I'd like to offer that we allow up to nine members, and maybe we could add this into the resolution. And maybe we could add this into the resolution on the appointment of the BAC members so we make them legal when we make, as we appoint them.
I think that's, that's fine. I don't believe you have a resolution for that before you this evening.
I thought, we're approving them.
I don't believe they're appointed by the board.
I think actually they are appointed by the board.
Yeah, I think. At least I. I think we're going to have to have a resolution in the business agenda at the next meeting. In the meantime, we can make the charter changes.
The committee shall consist of seven members is pretty.
Need to amend it then.
Appointed by the board.
The superintendent will make recommendations, the school board for six committee members and a chairperson. So yes, it's up to.
So we can, we can do both at the same time with one resolution. We can. You can also, the minutes will, the meeting will reflect the action. You could take the action tonight. We can, you can have an oral motion to amend the charter and appoint the members and vote on it here, and it will be, it will be binding. It isn't your usual practice, but you can do that.
Might as well.
Is there any objection?
Well, let's figure out what the wording would be instead of shall consist of seven.
I would say up to nine.
Do we want to have a minimum number? Do you want to have a minimum number?
How about seven to 10?
You don't want 10 because.
You know, our view is the number really isn't that important so long as it doesn't become unwieldy. It doesn't need to be an odd number. We don't take votes. You know, we hear opinions and try to reach consensus.
Right.
So, you know, certainly, at least, I'd be happy if we had 10. I think that number would be, would be fine.
So maybe between seven and 10 range worked? Between seven and 10? I move that we change the charter to say between seven and 10.
Second.
Okay. Director Brim Edwards moves. Director Constance seconds. Any discussion about it? Okay. Should we take a vote? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Abstentions?
Yes.
Student representative? Okay. This passes unanimously.
The charter is amended.
The charter is amended.
Yeah.
Want a motion on accepting the new appointments?
So the next order of business would be appointing the three proposed members.
Chair Moore.
And the renewal of those who, whose term is expiring.
Mr. Peterson.
You want to keep me around?
We thought you were going to get off.
It would hurt my feelings if you say no.
Okay. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no.
Sorry, did we get a motion in a second? Did I miss?
Oh, okay. So, okay.
Second.
Okay. Director Esposito Brown moves. Director Bailey seconds. All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student Representative Peasler?
Yes.
Okay. You are hereby appointed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you for your service.
I'd actually, just a question. Kevin, sorry about your, got into the appointments and then got into voting.
Yep.
You said that the Franklin projects and Roosevelt projects were done? Oh, that's a key qualifier because.
They're in closeout, yeah.
Well, there's, there was a board resolution on the things regarding the items that were not to ed specs.
Correct.
And I just, I don't want anybody from the Franklin or Roosevelt community thinking that it's done because the board has, if Tom Kurler were sitting here, he'd be bringing up the Roosevelt CTE. We have security projects at some of the buildings and also the baseball and softball field at Franklin, and I'm sure some other things. So I just want to make sure that we're not closing out so substantially.
Well, we are closing the contracts, at least, not necessarily the projects.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we don't get a rash of, hey, you told us we were going to finish things out.
The substantial provisions are terminable.
Yeah.
Yes. For the contract.
Okay.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, quarterly report, 2012 and 2017 bonds from staff. I'd like to ask Dan Young, Senior Director of School Monetization, to provide a report.
Good evening, Chairman Moore, Directors and Superintendent. Thank you for your time this evening. With me I have Scott Parala, who is our Bond Program Manager. Tom and Kevin, I think, did the heavy lifting for us tonight, so I won't go through most of my notes. It'll be a repeat of what you heard from them. But I would like to point out that in your packets tonight, you have information regarding the status of the 2012 and 2017 bond programs. The materials provided are substantially the materials that provided to the Bond Accountability Committee on October 17th, including a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, the balance scorecard, and the financials. One document to call out there for, specifically for your attention, is a memo regarding OSM's approach to cost analysis and value engineering. There had been some questions in the past of what that process is and how we go through that. So there is a memo in there that details what that iterative process is and also has an analysis of both Madison and Lincoln in there as well. And then just the last item was actually already brought up by Kevin and Tom about the Bond Accountability Committee members, and that has already been voted on. So with that, Scott and I are happy to answer any questions.
Can you take a crack at the same question that I asked about external cost validations?
I can take a crack at that. So the OSM did look at potential projects that would be similar to the ones that we're proposing now, and we presented that, I think, over the summer. I think, and I won't put words in anyone's mouth, but none of those projects were an apples-to-apples comparison. I would argue, I don't know if we were, if we continue digging, if we're going to find an apples-to-apples comparison. We can keep looking at for those things, but I don't know if that is really going to turn up anything. So I think I might ask, the question is, what, what questions would be informed with additional data? That's more of a rhetorical question of what are we trying to dig at and get at here? The focus on the cost side, including what this memo addresses is, the OSM puts a lot of effort into is confirming that our designs are efficient designs and then our costs are representative of the market. If those two things are true, then the costs are validated, if you will. You're saying this is an efficient design and your costs represent the market. And we have a number of strategies and the memo outlines a number of those of how to get there. Trying to find other like projects can give us information. I don't know what that's going to inform or what different decisions we're going to make with that information. That said, we're happy to continue to look for other potential options. Does that answer your question?
I mean, does the, the heart of my question would be whether it is your joint professional opinion that the difference in the cost per square foot of the 2017 projects relative to 2012 is reflective of the escalation that we see in the market and that we, could you tell us that we can be assured that these aren't design standards, differences in design standards or inefficiencies or any other factors that are leading to really dramatically different cost per square foot for these projects?
Sure. I think the way I'd answer that question is, the answer is probably, it's a lot of those things. And it's hard to pin down either one or what percentage they might be. Certainly, we can look at data and even data that's specific to Portland and say, construction cost escalation in Portland is 5% or 7% or whatever it is. That said, that's probably really valuable if you build Walgreens or something because you're building the same thing over and over again. Our projects are really unique. We even had a conversation with a contractor on Franklin about comparing that to Madison and specifically looking at those dollars per square foot. And so the feedback we got is they're so drastically different. Yes, they're large high schools. Yes, they're historic. One's a wood structure, one's a concrete structure. They're really not apples-to-apples. So what we end up doing when we try to find these other projects that are similar to our PPS projects is it becomes an exercise in why they're different, not look they're the same, therefore we get a lot of data out of that. So I know that's kind of a wordy answer and maybe not overly satisfying, but it's hard to pin the exact pieces down.
Scott, any additional thoughts on that?
Same, and I would echo Dan's comments, the idea that you're trying to align is virtually impossible, that steel versus CMU versus wood, the difference of the HVAC systems alone, whether you're using single top, or gas packs up on top of the roof versus a centralized plant, all lead to different cost per square foot. Even the idea of the size of, say, a gym, the larger the gym, the cost per square foot for the gym will go down because you simply have more square footage. Costs does go up for the larger square footage, but because by volume you have more, the cost per square, cost per square foot goes down. So trying to align all those elements starts to become exponentially harder as you're trying to find that pure apples-to-apples comparison.
And for what it's worth, an anecdotal conversation with one of our architects is like, this is what's happening in the market.
Any other questions? Okay. Then how about we move right into the bond value engineering analysis?
Absolutely. So in your packets is a copy of the memo that looks like this. I won't obviously read it verbatim, so I'll just cover it very quickly. The intention of this was, and to Director Brim Edward's comments about going and looking back at the previous projects and what was value engineered out, that resolution has two deliverables, at least in our mind. One is that, and the other one was this discussion about value engineering. So the intention of this was to outline what exactly our process is and to note that it's iterative. It's something that happens continually throughout a project, doesn't happen at one point in time. So this, this document outlines how we go through that process. At each different design phase, we get a cost estimate that comes in from our cost estimator. We compare that to either a third-party separate cost estimate or a cost estimate from our contractor, and then we do an alignment of the two, and they have to be within 10% or else we don't move on to the next phase. Value engineering is something that happens during that cost estimating comparison, but also throughout the life of the project. And depending on what the scope of the value engineering or the cost reduction is, sometimes it's something very small that can be made at the project level, or sometimes it's something that's more significant that needs to come all the way up to the board. It really depends on what the level it is and the impact is of that change. A good example of value engineering in the process, I think, that has gone well, is the Madison Gym. Originally, the Madison Gym was intended to be renovated. It was very costly, and it carried a lot of risk because it was a very large structure that had a lot of hazardous materials. When we brought our CMGC onboard, they took a look at that and said, hey, I think we can get the same equivalence here of space. If we tear that down, build it back new, we'll actually reduce the schedule. So that was our critical path item. So reduce the schedule, it'll cost less, you'll have a brand-new facility, and you'll have less risk because you won't have all those unknowns when you're trying to renovate that work. So I think that's a good example of value engineering when it works out really well, and the importance of bringing on those general contractors as soon as we can. So that's what the outline is of this memo, and it goes into a process that we do with our high schools now, is we take the data that we have with Roosevelt and Franklin and Grant, we put them on a chart, and we break it down by CSI divisions. So that's when you talk about construction, there's these different divisions that are, I mean, there's got 32?
Yeah.
32, something like that, 34. And so we look at each division and we see where is there an outlier? So is concrete an outlier for Madison or is steel a concrete for Lincoln, which it is because it's a steel structure? And we go through and we validate on each one of those, why, if there's an outlier, why is it an outlier? Do we have a good rationale for it is? Because Lincoln's a steel structure, so it's going to be higher? Or is there not? Is there, is there something we need to look into? A good example is on Madison. Their structure was a lot higher than some of our previous projects. So we brought in a third-party structural engineer to do a peer review, and they came up with some cost-saving options that we, that we took into place there. So that's just an example of some of the process that we go through.
No, this was great. This was really helpful.
I did think it was an awfully good memo. I don't say that easily. It's a really good memo.
Thank you.
But I do have a question. I don't want to seem to be the dead horse. Yes, the Madison Gym, that's a wonderful example of value engineering working well. It hasn't always worked well for us, say, for instance, the irrigation system at Roosevelt, which was value engineered out, so all landscaping died. That probably was not the most cost-effective thing the district's ever done.
Was the irrigation system removed at Roosevelt altogether?
It was, I think there was some that was not, but it was also, it was put back eventually. Scott, you can.
So not to dwell on the specifics of that, but how are we going to have a second set of eyes on it? Certainly, God knows, don't want to have the board second-guessing you at every step of the way.
Correct.
You do not want me second-guessing you at every step of the way. But how are we going to eliminate those kinds of mistakes going forward?
Sure. That's a great question. We've made a lot of process changes between the early projects and the projects that we're in design and planning right now. One of them is the steering committee. So all the new projects have steering committees, which is a representation across the leadership of the district. And we use these, these groups as opportunities to share any value engineering or cost reduction options so that those groups, those teams are up to speed. Also, at every phase of the project, we do what we call page turns, where we sit down with the different shops here, grounds and the mechanical, all the different shops, and we go through the current status and get their feedback on the design. And what we highlight is any change from the previous phase, also any deviation from our design guidelines or our ed specs. So we're making sure that we're constantly getting eyes on those of the subject matter experts. So we think that will, will help greatly.
Right. I expect a vote. That's good.
Can I just ask about the phasing, the closeout issues at Roosevelt that could be attributable to the phasing of the project? And what have you learned from that that can be applied to the Benson project? Because we're going to be phasing that as well.
So one of the things we're doing, essentially what we're dealing with is oftentimes as over a multi-year project, we've installed many components of the HVAC system in Phase One. They go into operation. That starts our warranty. By the time we get through the third phase, we're into the third year, we're just finishing up with some of the equipment and some of the plant. However, the first pieces of the plant are now out of warranty. The stuff in Phase Two is about to come out of warranty in different stages. So one of the things we've been exploring is, is the idea of working with, say, the CMGC contractor at Madison of, when we go to do the project, what would the cost value be to extend the warranties by the GC to maintain all of the systems, to bring them up to a complete handover at the end of the final phase? Those are, I know Madison is a single-phase project, but Benson would be, we will be paying a premium in the mechanical package. However, the long-term operational cost will be reduced because our mechanical shop will be getting a complete system handed over at one time. So that's, that's one example of how we're addressing that.
Extended warranties are generally speaking, a lousy idea, but I think this is the exception. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. Okay. Next item, West Side Boundary Correction. Last spring, the Enrollment and Forecasting Committee voted unanimously to send this item to the full board for a vote. The board received a report on this item at their, at the November 6th work session and a recommendation from staff. I'd like to ask Judy Brennan of Enrollment and Transfer Office to explain the rationale for the proposed boundary change.
The rationale for this change is to correct two errors that were recently identified in a decision that the board made in April 2016. One of those is simply we named a street incorrectly in the resolution that the board passed. The name of that street is not one that we've been using to decide boundaries since that time, so we're asking for a correction to correct the record, name the appropriate street. street. The second is that we believe that it was the intent of the board at the time to draw a portion of the boundary line between West Sylvan and Gray Middle School, between Lincoln and Wilson High School, um, in a way that both sides of Shoals Ferry Road would be assigned to the same middle and high schools. Unfortunately, the way the resolution was written, it actually put in place that it split, uh, that area, and one side of Shoals Ferry Road has been, um, going to Lincoln, and the other would eventually be assigned to Wilson. Now, because of delays in implementation, we haven't exactly, we haven't actually experienced that yet. So this would be the first year that, um, children would experience that difference. Community members from the area raised the concern. Thus, last spring showed us versions of maps that were available at the time. Um, and based on that, we've come back with a recommendation to modify that line. It's a slight modification. It affects a total of fifty-five households, seventeen students who are currently enrolled in PBS in grades K through 12, so it's about one to two students per grade level, and has very minimal impact on the schools affected. It does mean that the students who live in that small area, about a mile long along Shoals Ferry Road, would have the same, um, access to schools regardless of which side of that road you live on.
I think what you mean by access is the underlying logic of the original boundary decision was based on transportation, um, that was available to those students. And the kids on the east side of Shoals Ferry have the exact same transportation constraints as the kids on the west, so it doesn't make sense for them to, um, be subjected to, uh, actually really challenging transportation issues. So, technical necessary fix and some very astute and dogged families that have pursued this over the last year and a half, so thank you to them.
Okay. Did you?
Just as long as students have a choice of transportation, that it's easier for them, I'm good to go.
Okay. Well, wait a minute. The board will now consider Resolution Number 5751, School Boundary Revision for Gray and West Sylvan Middle Schools and Lincoln and Wilson High Schools. Director Bailey moves. Director Espaza Brown seconds. Um, is there any public comment?
There is not.
Okay. Is there any further board discussion? The board will now vote on Resolution 5751. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Student Representative Paisley?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution 5751 is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, next item is Franklin Mascot Naming Process. In May 2018, the board reviewed a complaint requesting name change of the Franklin High School nickname Quakers, asserting that Quakers is the name, quote, "Quakers is the name of an organized, organized religion and as such is inappropriate, offensive, and unconstitutional", unquote. Uh, the board voted by resolution at that time for staff to bring forward a community engagement process to determine a new nickname for Franklin. That process is now before the board, and I'd like to ask Cameron Vaughn, Community and Public Affairs Manager, to provide the report.
Good evening. Uh, again, my name is Cameron Vaughn. The, um, let's see, I'm just going to kind of whip over here. Based upon, uh, previous school naming processes done during my time here at Portland Public Schools, I tried to model best practices for what worked at Harrison Park, Roseway Heights, and Beverly Cleary Schools. The public engagement processes there were successful, and school community members felt heard. In only one instance, there was not consensus on the best name, which was at what is now Harrison Park School. The committee presented several names to the superintendent, and none of them truly resonated the spirit of the community, and the names were rejected, and a new and more appropriate name, Harrison Park, was quickly, quickly selected and approved. Franklin High School's Principal Chris Frazier, who's here this evening, and I met to discuss how the process might proceed once the board approves this plan for the committee. We have a healthy timeline, and we both feel confident in the committee's ability to find an appropriate representation for Franklin High School within the allotted timeline. We have a robust outreach plan and a multitude of ways to engage the community in helping this process to be successful. If the board has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but I do want to point out that there is one change, uh, which should be in front of you. On page three, it's highlighted in yellow, and we would like to remove that sentence and the single S down at the bottom of the page.
The reason we're removing it is it's not consistent with the policy already.
Yes, and I, uh, it is not consistent with the policy that you put forward. It's actually from previous language, and, uh, we need to strike that.
So I'm, I'm going to thank, um, the Communications Department, and, um, I, I think they've got a good process laid out where the community will fully, um, be heard, and I think once we get into it, which tonight is the sort of kicking off of it, um, there's going to be a lot of excitement among the student community, um, and the broader community about, um, redefining what Franklin's next century is going to look like and how they're, how they're going to show up in the community. So, um, I really want to thank, um, thank for the work that's done, putting together a pretty complete process, um, and for shepherding it through, and to Mr. Frazier. Um, I know you're going to do a great job, and I can't wait to hear what, uh, the community recommends to the superintendent and the board.
So I just have a slight worry about the, um, about the community charter. So on a list that makes up the group, there's six adults, members of the, um, community from the school, and I only see two students on that committee. Is that a limit, or is that, is that the number that is going to be, like, that's, there's just going to be two students?
Well, at present, that is the limit that we put on it. We tried to be deliberate also, having it be, uh, an odd number in case there was an issue with people not agreeing on the name.
So I'm going to say that, what's our number at Franklin now? Six, fifteen hundred, sixteen?
This number of students? Eighteen fifty.
Yeah. So eighteen hundred students go to Franklin, and I'm, I am just personally concerned that there are not enough students. I mean, there's an overall, at this ratio, there's an overarching amount of adults in this committee.
Sure.
There's eighteen hundred kids at Franklin. I mean, have, has, like, you know, I would say certain affinity clubs have reached out to this, have student government reached, been reached out to leadership kids. Um, I think a lot more students are going to be, like, interested in being part of this committee, so I would recommend that there's a good increase in the amount of students in this committee. I don't, I, I really don't think two is enough.
We'd be happy to change it to whatever you recommend.
Okay.
I would support or introduce an amendment to add more students so that we can have a diversity of perspectives from students.
And I would count with that.
The only requirement is that, is a minimum requirement, which is at least one teacher and one classified employee, but otherwise, it says, including current students, staff, community partners, alumni, and any other key stakeholders. So, we're, it's not a limitation, it's.
Right. Well.
Are we voting?
Yep. Maybe to put some language to that, I would say I would have representative students from each, each grade level, um.
On, on the committee?
On the committee, yeah.
Okay.
Representatives from each grade level, um, with that, you know, that, that could be from student governments from each of the grade levels, um, and as well as, I think for future, going forward, if this happens to other schools, maybe certain students who are involved in affinity, in affinity clubs that have to deal with this. I know this is a, um, a name centered around religion, but there might, you know, be names in the future that are addressed around, um, just, you know, other issues. So I think maybe some clubs need to be reached out to, and I'd say the leadership kids as well need to know that this is happening.
That's a great recommendation. We'll absolutely do that.
So do we want to put a number on it?
I mean, yeah.
I think you said one per grade level, but.
So six, one per grade level plus two other representatives of affinity groups?
So that's, that's six total. I, I would venture, do we, does it have to be an odd or even number? Does it matter? I would probably venture to say maybe eight, because I would like, I would, because I think having some students from a leadership class as well, just because they're working in the entire school would be a good thing, so.
Okay, great. Or just a thought, another way you could approach it is to, um, add to the designation of alumni, um, you know, so alumni within the last five years.
That's actually a good point.
Something like that. I mean, I'd leave it to you, but that's.
Recently graduated alumni.
What if I were to come up with a, um, just a couple of new words here and send it out to you tomorrow for your review?
Well, don't we want to pass this tonight?
Okay, so, um, so I'm going to direct this to, uh, legal counsel. So we're, we do not have a resolution on this. We're taking a vote, so it's a sense of the board. Does that provide any additional leeway in the wording? Do we need to wordsmith this now? Or can we?
Staff in consultation with the student representative determines the composition.
So I'm confused, what exactly are we voting on?
To increase.
We're, we're accepting this proposal for an engagement process.
The resolution that we passed last spring, when we changed, said that they were going to change the name, had that the district staff would bring both an AD and an engagement process for the board to review and approve.
Okay.
So this is the approval. It seems like you'd just do a simple amendment. Can you just, can we just do a range?
So, I did.
Can we just do a range, like, say, four to eight students?
Yeah, I would, yeah. Mm-hmm. I, I would probably maybe eight, eight to ten, I think, for me.
Okay.
No, I know, I, I'm just, eight, that's, it's, there's four grades, eighteen hundred kids, I mean, I think for eight to ten.
You're, you're starting to get into a committee size that gets to be a little too big.
Is it too big?
So, I mean, one, one thing I will say is.
Twelve is about.
This is all designed that, um, the committee, part of the process, is to solicit broad-based, um, feedback from the community, and when they, when the committee makes a recommendation to the superintendent, they need to be able to show, um, what sort of outreach has happened, what sort of support the, the recommended name has. So they'll, in addition to, um, people serving on the committee, I think there'll be lots of opportunities for others to be part of the, the process.
You know, it seemed like you could have four students who were, in addition to being a junior, were also a member of an affinity group.
Two firsts. And leadership.
When I look at the community engagement plan, um, there's nothing here about supportive languages, you know, it doesn't talk about working with community culturally-based organizations or anything. So I think it's just important, um, this is more to our communication problem, uh, department probably, that whenever we talk about our community engagement plan, that we're looking not just English-speaking parents, but the outreach to, you know, to diverse community at large, and some specifics on how we're going to go about that. Even though some schools may not be as diverse as others, um, it's still our diverse community.
We'll make sure we do that.
Yeah. And, and that's, uh, when it says the committee may hold public meetings, don't you want that to be will hold?
Yeah.
Um, and that might be a, a place to insert a clause about outreach to historically underserved.
Well, and I think in the engagement plan, there needs to be something specific.
Yeah.
And we look to see where.
I was curious about the balance of adults to community members from the immediate community, as opposed to, say, only one teacher or, you know, a pretty passionate alumni association or, um.
Which there is there at Franklin High School.
Yeah.
They are.
Yes.
Um, and so, is that just generic people who live in the neighborhood? Is that?
I think because this is our first one, it's sort of a, a learning curve for us as to the best way to put together this committee, and I look to your leadership to tell us what it is that you'd like to, you know, who you'd like to have represented, and we want to make sure that we mirror that, we reflect your, your wishes.
So I guess I'm, I'm thinking it's fine to have, you know, sort of generic community member, um, and I'd put more weight on somebody who has more of an attachment to the school, or a demonstrated attachment to the school. And I don't know exactly what the, again, I don't want to get too, too in the weeds here.
I mean, you could classify this like PTA's or foundations, like someone who's connected, like a community member that's connected through that? To specify?
You know, would two parents be better than two community members and switch two and one? I, you know, I, I feel like I'm really micro, that, that's, I want to just give, give that reflection, but.
So a suggestion may be that we expand the students, and then we, um, ask that Mr. Frazier, Principal Frazier, come back if, um, it feels like there needs to be something else added or we're missing something, um, but that just go with this as a base with the added students, I mean.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, so.
Probably a good way to proceed.
So what kind of, what kind of wording do we need to make this work?
So what I, I've heard two concrete proposals for amendments. One is to change the number of students, and the other is to change. May to will in terms of holding public meetings. So I think those are fairly discreet, and probably like we did the last one, we take the motion to approve this, motion second, offer the amendments.
And then do I offer another amendment about supporting diverse languages of the community engagement plan?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a question about the will. That doesn't mean they all have to do it. I'm just thinking, there's going to be times, um, so, Principal Frazier's running, running a school as well, there'll be, there'll be times when you for sure want to have, well, I mean, host public meetings to gather the input, and probably when they have decision-making, but I want to make sure that we don't say, like, every single time the committee meets, it has to meet all the, you know, the requirements of what we would consider a public meeting? I just want to be careful that we're not making that a, this is the only way.
Yeah, this is a public meeting to hear comment from community members, so it's specifically cast as an outreach meeting.
Okay.
And it also provides for other needs of the community to simply.
Um, well, as long as we're on this, let's nail down some language. So, um, how about if we say, uh, up to ten Franklin High School students?
What?
Okay? That gives some.
I'm, I would move forward with that, yeah. Because I just, I mean, I don't like to sit here and limit myself on student representation, because I think that's something that's not addressed, so I don't want to limit it. Yeah, so up to ten.
Up to ten, okay. Um, because, so if I'm adding correctly, that would make fifteen members plus the principal is meeting facilitator, which is kind of the outer limit of a functioning committee.
Who decides? Who decides?
How many student members are on this? You can have up to ten, but someone's going to have to decide, is it six, is it eight?
So frankly, I don't think we should have more than twelve. Um, I mean, just to be able to.
Total.
Yeah, total?
Yeah.
Um.
Two and a half.
This, this can't become a huge, all-consuming, you know.
Yeah. Project. How about if we insert at least in front of this list and maybe bump the students up to at least four, or at least something that keeps this total closer to twelve? And so if there's.
Yeah.
You know, two incredibly passionate alumni members, we've got flexibility around that. If there's a couple of parent leaders, we have some flexibility about that, and leave that in the hands of the principal and not the board.
Okay. What's your minimum?
Four. Minimum four.
Yeah?
Yeah. I mean, that gives me, that gives them one per grade, so.
Okay.
Okay, so.
At least four.
That's a good, that's a good minimum, and.
Yeah, and it can go a little up from there, but.
At least four students.
Minimum, yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to just say I think we should have two parents. Okay, so I guess I'm gonna just say I think we should have two parents. This has been a five-year project by parents in the Franklin community, and they, they drove this, and just to have one parent on the community, I mean.
But you've got alumni association member and two other community members. So that's four, four adults from the community there.
I'm saying there were a cohort of parents who spent three years on a complaint with the school district.
How about we do two parents and one community member, and again, that's an at least.
Is there gonna be a community member also anywhere?
Okay, do you have all these changes?
I do.
Do we, are we gonna have to go through, through all of these changes individually, or can we do a blanket, and then?
We could do a blanket amendment unless someone insists on pulling one out. I'm, I just, when we put the at least language in, I don't think the current charter is clear as to who makes that decision. So that's my.
I, I was gonna make a similar comment, so we definitely list principal as the meeting facilitator, but it doesn't really clarify in the first paragraph who selects the committee members. So I would argue we should have a balance of students and adults on this committee, and the principle that we entrust upon him that he will select a well-balanced representative committee.
Did staff discuss, did communications staff discuss who would choose?
Who would choose the committee members?
Yeah.
Well, in here, it states that the principal and a staff member from communications would help to make that selection.
Okay, how about we do this? This committee, and that's quite an acronym we got there. This, the committee will be chosen by the Franklin High School principal, who will also serve as meeting facilitator, with a membership to include community members, a teacher and classified staff, parent leaders, high school students, and, and alumni.
With an even number of adults and students.
Okay.
There we go.
There you go.
Okay. Did somebody get that language?
Thank heavens for instant replay online.
Okay. Okay, are we good? Okay.
Just, just to be clear, the principal is non, a non-voting member?
Doesn't make a distinction.
That seemed to be what you were implying.
What would you like? What would make most sense?
I'm just trying to get it nailed down one way or another.
Six adults, six students, principal acting as a tiebreaker.
There you go.
That's, that's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why principals get the big bucks.
That's fine.
I don't really think that's fair. If, if you have to have the principal break the tie, I think we should get a, we should get a different name. I, I don't think that's very express.
Okay. Okay, I, I, I don't think we should try to anticipate every possible permutation of this process from up here. Okay, there's nothing here that says he can't vote, so. Okay, but let's clarify, he, he or she, how long, who knows how long this is gonna take, gets a vote.
It's supposed to be done by this spring.
We know exactly how long it's going to take.
Okay, okay. Okay, are we good? Can we just take a voice vote that includes all of this?
I'm fine with that.
Board member would like to pull out any of those individualized amendments.
Does anyone object? Plus the, right, right, plus the.
In all the supported languages and communities?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, where does that go?
The community engagement plan. I'll create a bullet point.
Well, it can be in the committee charter around will hold public meetings.
To include.
Right. Yeah, and it can also be in the community engagement plan, we spell out.
Cause I think it just should be a model for any community engagement process that we're always discussing.
Okay, we ready to vote? Okay. Okay, do I get a second? Okay, Director Bailey moves, Director Espaza Brown seconds. The adoption of the Franklin High School mascot identification naming process.
As amended.
As amended. No, we don't have to. She said it's okay. We're good.
Unless someone wants to pull it out.
We're good. Okay. Okay, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no? Abstentions? Okay, Student Representative Pasler?
Yes.
Okay. We adopt the communication plan unanimously by vote of seven to zero. Thank you.
I look forward to receiving your recommendation, Principal Fraser, at some point this school year.
Yeah, thank you for all your work. Thank you.
Thank you. And have fun with it.
I can't wait, Ashley. It is a fun.
Yeah, very much.
Okay. Okay, all right. Exemptions to instructional hours. At our August fourteenth meeting, the board received a staff report with recommendations, heard public testimony, and had an extensive debate on the merits of the State Board of Education's proposals to allow some flexibility for families to determine the most appropriate schedule for their high school students. By a majority vote, the P P S board voted to support all four proposed categories of waivers for instructional hours. Those positions were subsequently conveyed to the State Board of Education to consider in their deliberations. The State Board approved all four waiver categories in September after a substantive debate in consideration of feedback from school districts all over the state. Under the new rules, local school boards must vote on whether they intend to avail themselves of those waivers and notify the State Board. We have rescheduled the vote on whether to reaffirm the board's existing positions on the waivers to December eighteenth, twenty eighteen, in order to allow for further public engagement and review of data. Tonight, the board will hear a report from staff regarding additional data on current exemptions to instructional hours. So I'd like to ask Area Superintendent of High Schools Jill LaFontaine to provide the report.
Thank you, Director Moore, directors, Superintendent Guerrero. Thank you for that lead. That takes care of my first slide pretty quickly. We do want to try to give you a little bit more information about some current data, and answering some of the questions that have been provided by the board on this topic. We're going to be focusing primarily on the exemptions two and three in the law, where we're looking at seniors who are on track for graduation, and who the students are who are taking accelerated coursework. This chart here helps to identify exactly what the current state is of our school. Now, if you examine the first column where it talks about seventeen, eighteen school year, you will see that this identifies what our rate was of identifying students as being fully scheduled. Fully scheduled in Portland Public School means that, that they have eight, eight classes. In our high schools, we have an eight-period day. There's four periods each day. They're each ninety minutes long. A student that has eight periods of, of classes assigned to them is fully scheduled. So according to this chart, in seventeen, eighteen, Benson had sixty-three point three one percent of their students fully scheduled, and a grand total in the comprehensive high schools of seventy percent. As you know, the state threshold is eighty percent for each school to have. Recognizing that last. Yes, sir.
The state defines fully enrolled as nine hundred and ninety hours.
Yes.
Correct?
That's correct. We have different definitions. That is correct.
Currently, we satisfy the nine hundred and ninety hours through an eight-class schedule.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Currently, last year, when we recognized that we had rates that were not going to make the threshold for the law this year, our office directed high schools to enroll all freshmen, sophomores, and juniors this year to full schedules, to see what that would do to our actual enrollment. Our projections were that it would get us, get those schools to over eighty percent. So when you look at the, the chart on the right, you will see eighteen, nineteen school year and the actual impact of that recommendation. That recommendation was done verbally, and we've talked about putting it into some form of a directive, formal directive. We currently have not formalized it yet. But you can see that just verbally, that directive increased the rate by twelve percent. We still have a few schools, we have three schools that are on the cusp of making that eighty percent threshold. Lincolnwood Roundup. We have two schools that still would fall short, though, without having any exemptions. These are all without exemptions. If you wanted to look more deeply at what that looks like across the different grade levels, you can see that the top chart here shows you what the student body looked like for freshmen, sophomores, and juniors. And overall, in seventeen, eighteen versus eighteen, nineteen, you can see the dates are one year apart. Freshmen last year at this time, ninety-nine percent had a full schedule as defined by our district. You can see this year, it's a hundred percent. You can also see the growth there, again, in regards to the total number of students at eighty-one percent enrolled. Unfortunately, that's not the number that the state uses, but it does show that we are making progress when we are explicit about our expectations for enrollment. Now, this is specifically about seniors who are on track to graduate, and this goes to Superintendent Guerrero's point, which is, we define students on track for graduation differently in Portland Public than the state of Oregon does. And so, state of Oregon also expects that for a student to be on track for graduation, that they have eighteen credits accumulated at the start of their senior year. In Portland Public, we're more explicit about that. We actually, if you would, we actually have very explicit expectations for where those credits are acquired, so that we know that the student is actually tracking toward graduation. Instead, they don't have twenty P E credits, or whatever it might, might be.
So can I just ask a question about that?
Yeah.
I sent it last night, looked at some of the data. But apparently, we, just, just correct me if I'm wrong, cause I, I didn't get, get an answer to this, but the, to get a credit towards graduation, you have to get a, a D.
That's correct.
So you could, if you go back to the other slide.
Yes.
You could get six Ds in ninth grade, and P P S would still, or do we have some, some?
P P S, if, if a D is a passing grade, then it would be counted, they'd be on track for graduation with six Ds.
So you could theoretically have a one point and be on track to graduate.
That's correct.
Under our standards.
Under the state of Oregon standards and, and our standards, both.
And our standards as well.
Yes. I share this slide just to show that it's more explicit in how we try to identify what is on track for our, for our students. And that does vary from some schools to others, because we have some schools that have very specific programming, like Benson has. We also, in Portland, have this report that goes out to parents. It's sent out at semester. This helps the parents know if their students are on track, and if they're accumulating the proper credits, so that they're moving toward graduation. And this helps drill down exactly where their kids are at, moving forward. It's a really nice tool for parents to have. And what I would like to point out for you is, when we talk about the exemption for seniors on track, when you examine the data from, the accumulated data from the last three years, ninety-six percent of the students, when we define them as being on track in Portland Public, ninety-six percent of our students that have been on track have graduated at the end of the year. So, so I, I share that, because I think that's a really significant point to understand that it's a, it's a, I see it as a pretty reasonable threshold for what a student is moving in the right direction toward graduation.
Partly goes, why is it ninety-nine? That actually seems.
Well, I.
Oh, you made, you've made it that far. You're obviously.
Yeah.
Forgetting successful as a student.
Yeah, there's some real research about marathon runners not stopping in the last mile, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can't explain that.
But again, that, that doesn't necessarily, because we accept a D as a, you're earning a credit, that it's not mastery.
It's, it's not mastery. That's correct.
But there are lots of other supports that come into play, particularly in, you know, ninth grade. If you see that, those kind of results.
Absolutely.
Even though technically, they send you on your way toward graduation.
Absolutely. There's, there's a number of challenges that our students have. Not everybody comes into their freshman year fully ready to be engaged in every form of curriculum that we have. There's a number of students, well beyond the four percent not represented there, that have challenges.
Would it be easy to get a distribution of the grade point average of seniors, kids who start senior year on track?
I asked for that data, so it should.
I think, I think, I think we're actually working on it.
Great, thanks.
Yeah. Now, these are just some anecdotes. We asked some counselors to give us some anecdotes of how this would apply to seniors, and these are three that were shared with us. That first-generation college student wants to have fewer classes, so they can use extra time to work on scholarship applications, college essays, and balance a part-time job to support their family. While they are still able to take six classes, maybe, in a full load, they use that other time to maybe do some of these things, much like a five oh four student needs more time for supports in the work that they're doing, as well as a student on the, on the other end of that spectrum needs that time for the more challenging coursework that they might find in A P or I B dual-credit classes. This, this is, this chart shows you what the data is for this year for students that are on track. So Benson currently has a hundred and ninety seniors who are on track toward graduation. That's eighteen percent of their population. Okay, and that's how this chart reads. So currently, we have eighteen percent of our population that are on track to graduate, coming into this school year, using Portland Public's definition of on track for graduation.
Good evening. I'm gonna talk about the advanced coursework, and there were some questions regarding advanced coursework at the August meeting. And so I have some data points that were asked for. So these are just some starting data points around students who are involved in advanced coursework in our district. So that includes international baccalaureate classes, the I B D P. That includes advanced placement, as well as dual-credit courses. And so some of the data points around advanced coursework is that those courses require two to three hours of homework per week, per course. And in the seventeen, eighteen school year, ninety-four percent of seniors who participated in advanced coursework classes graduated on time, and eighty-five percent of juniors who participated in advanced coursework were on track to graduate by their school year. And the students in advanced coursework also have a higher G P A of three point two six compared to the average of two point eight nine. Additional anecdotal examples that were given from counselors at the high schools. They gave us an example of a student who's taking six I B courses, and is also involved in an intensive dance program. And so uses those extra periods to complete homework and study. And another student who is in five A P classes, and also a dual-credit course, and then also participates in the Timbers Youth Development Team.
But the data that you have in here shows that the vast majority of students take one, and even lower numbers take three.
Yes.
So my guess is those are the complete outliers. There, there are, there are gonna be some, but, well, the, the data, that's what the data shows, is that, I mean, for example.
But those outliers are at the schools where the eighty percent comes into play. So they're outliers in the system as a whole.
So is, so is a student on track to graduate with a one-point G P A.
Yeah.
Or a two-point, or two-five. Well, I'm just.
One point.
Well, we don't, we don't have the data. I guess is, that was a theoretical question. I don't think it's.
One of the other things that we just say about those that are taking only one course is that may be those that are trying to enter into that level of study as well. And that's something that we, as a high school team, have been trying to endorse and support, is them challenging themselves with that higher rigor. And so that may be some of the result of those numbers. We've seen increased numbers of participation in these courses.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say, so along those same lines of what Julie was saying. So you get the exemption, you can get the exemption if you're only taking one advanced class. You only have to take one. And what about, do you have to take the test?
And what about, do you have to take the test, or get a C or better? Is that qualification around that, too?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Well, you wouldn't get the test results until the end of the.
Yeah.
Year anyway, so.
Athlete.
You couldn't use that. But, okay, so, so correct me if I'm wrong, isn't the whole point of an exemption to be able to take account of the outliers? Isn't that the whole point? Like, we're not dealing with the mean.
Yes.
We're not dealing with the average.
Yeah.
We're dealing with individual students who have individual needs, who may need some flexibility.
Yeah.
And this allows us to give them some flexibility, to create a program that will allow them to succeed.
Right, yes.
But actually, the way the state rules were written, the State Board of Education, the eighty percent was the flexibility. And there was a fair amount of discussion at the State Board meeting about, if you already have flexibility, that twenty percent of the students don't have to be enrolled in it, in a full day of school. That there was a question, why additional flexibility was needed, because you already had flexibility built into it.
Which is actually where all of our high schools are, virtually. So it's also important to keep in mind here, that even though it would be sensible to enact the exemptions, we don't have a whole system that is in need of taking advantage of them. We're, we're basically right at the cusp of every single one of our individual schools meeting the eighty percent standard. It's important to point out.
That's correct.
These are the number of students who are enrolled in advanced coursework at each of the high schools. Dual credit, AP, and IB. And so when we talk about IB, we're only talking about the diploma program that's available to students in the eleventh and twelfth grade at Cleveland and Lincoln. Here's some information for you regarding just the differences in the advanced coursework. And where, at which high school each of the options is available.
So in twenty sixteen, I believe the board passed the APEIB Student Bill of Rights. And do we know that our advanced course offerings are aligned with, with that? Really, the intention was to provide a lot of supports, and to be much more directive as a system, to support historically underserved students taking AP and IB courses? I mean, looking at the data, it looks like we still have a ways to go, but I'm curious just in how, just the accessibility of the, of the classes, like numbers of sections.
There was a page in here that said, by subgroup, but then there was no information, and it said provided.
It was provided to you as a part of your packet, as, as a couple of additional pages. It was so intense of data, it looks like this. Director Brown, two pages, I believe it was included with your packet.
So much was included this week.
I'm sorry. Anyway, and it, and it just aggregates by grade, by race.
Okay, I don't see that.
To answer, as best I can, your question about the Student Bill of Rights for, for those classes, that, that information just came to our attention just recently, actually, when you shared that with us in email. So we're still looking into some of the details of that. We, I think that some of that stuff is in place, but I also believe there's room to still be, for us to still support that, to the full measure of the language of that. And that, like I said, that was new information for us.
I wasn't on the board, but it was passed unanimously, is my understanding, by the board, with a real intent on creating equity in the advanced courses.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we have recently looked at the document, and many of the practices shifted after the adoption of the Bill of Rights. So I know that because of that Bill of Rights is, there was additional funding for IB schools and for testing fees, and so I'm not sure that, at this time, we're meeting each of those line items, so that we will be looking into that in the future, but I, and I totally know that there have been some practices that have changed according, including dropping an advanced course. So I know there's a form for the students that they have to fill out, that has a parent or guardian signature, a teacher's signature, and administrator's signature, so I know that that, for example, had been a concern. So there, there's definitely evidence of some practices having shifted as a result of that, but I can't speak to if we're meeting every single line item.
And that's true, not just of dropping a class, but also for having less than eight classes, which, Jo, you mentioned at the beginning of the conversation, that it was a verbal directive, but it also included that extra step that parents had to sign off, and formally a petition to have less than a full schedule.
That's correct. It required a parent's signature and a signature of the principal.
Yeah.
And this slide shows dual credit opportunities for CTE specifically. And I do apologize, the Jefferson slide, they're offered at PCC, so I have the list of courses that are available at PCC. I don't, I apologize. Somehow, got that here. And then, these are research findings around students who participate in advanced coursework. So generally speaking, participation in advanced coursework has positive outcomes in regards to graduation rates, college entrance, college completion rates.
Just back to that slide. First bullet point, it's courses. So I believe, when the state did a lot of work earlier on, on this, is that the research is three college-level courses, so three AP, IB, dual credit. And that increases graduation, but also it's a great indicator of college readiness, and also college completion. So it's, actually, the research shows it's more than, it's much higher than the standard that's in the current state exemption requirement.
Okay.
Which is one.
Again, causation or correlation? What do you mean? I mean, does taking AP make you more ready for college, or is it the kids who are gonna succeed in college and take AP?
Hopefully, under our system, every kid's are gonna be taking AP and IB.
Or some of both.
Well, I think so.
Well.
But let's not. Every kid is gonna wanna take AP or IB.
But we do know that it correlates to graduation and, and college readiness and college success. And it is actually part of our Measure Ninety-eight funded suite of on-time graduation initiatives to encourage more students, and particularly historically underserved students, to enroll in AP and IB classes.
And beyond, beyond Measure Ninety-eight component, it's part of the high schools' four-year plan, to formally make those moves.
So I know that there had been a question around the, the student grades in advanced coursework. So this is from the seventeen eighteen school year, by grade level. And then, this is the grade that they achieved in the course. So, and, for example, two hundred and eighty-seven ninth graders last year earned an A in advanced And another question that had come up is desegregated, excuse me.
Desegregated. So, just part of, part of the nuance of this, assuming that exemptions are allowed, is where the exemptions are actually individually applied. So it's one thing for the board to approve its usage, it's another thing of how it's applied. And I'm curious about whether the standard would be, if you took a course and failed, or you could apply it to any of these other indicators, you know, when we get this diagram of grades, the, the discretion of the, applying of the exemption. And having some, having some sort of standards. So, currently, the data looks like half our high school students would be exempt. So we would, so technically, if wholesale, the board said, we support all these exemptions, and, you know, whoever wants them can take them, that we could have half of our high school students, again, not taking a full school day. So, the, the question of the discretion of when or where to apply the exemption is probably relevant, because my assumption is, it's not a wholesale blanket exemption for anybody who fits one of these pretty broad categories.
That's really for you to direct us to do. I would just like to say that the numbers that are represented here are current, I'm sorry, this is actually last year's.
This is last year.
So, the numbers that we shared with you on some previous slides, show that eighty-one percent of the students are in a full schedule, and we still are seeing an increased number of participation in these advanced course offerings, which I think is, I'm actually proud to state, because we're offering kids things that, that they are willing to try and move forward. I, I'm glad they're not any part of this conversation, because.
And also, our practice, which hasn't been formalized in an administrative directive, but it's my understanding that it will be formalized in administrative director, directive, is that ninth through eleventh graders will be scheduled in eleven classes, regardless of whether some of that is AP. So the.
Eight.
Or, excuse me.
Eight classes.
Eight classes.
Raise the bar.
Eight is a lot. My kids would.
Paying attention.
My kids would kill me. Ninth through eleventh graders would be scheduled in eight classes.
Yes.
And so, the, for their exemptions would only apply to seniors. So that's not fifty percent of our high school students.
Right.
So, but, I'm confused about that, because it was sent out as a, here's the AD, and then, when I asked about it, it was that it wasn't yet completed, and it is not clear what policy it's related to, and if, and if we don't actually have it in place, then the, then it, you know, then it's, it's not a directive until it's actually in place. And again, I'd be interested in what policy it's connected to.
So I'd like to respond to that. The AD, I think, was the attempt to try to answer as many questions as we could, without having a chance to vet it and really work on it as a team. We actually don't need an, an AD. What we need is procedures and expectations about how we would apply those. And we, we haven't had a chance to have that conversation, but I know that, aligned with our superintendent, is we would be very careful about how we applied that, and expect a process that would have principals, you know, working with the student, and the families, the counselors, whatever, to see if it is the right thing for the student. Because what we see those exemptions for are for those unique situations. It's not just to put a group of kids in and say, okay, we can just let you out, without actually looking at what the kids are doing. Remember, we are moving to trying to create a district that is more systematic, and is in, more operates like a system. But right now, there are so many things that operate differently at every high school, that we haven't even had the chance to really vet with principals, to have the conversation with our superintendent. So all that needs to happen, but I guess, I would just wanna assure you, that we would be wanting to take the highest standard we could, because we want our kids to be prepared for their next steps. So I know that sounds to me like there's been some assumptions that we are setting the bar low, but we don't wanna set the bar low, it's just that we've been, we're addressing a district that didn't have any directives like this or expectations. We have a year where we went forward with that, with just a verbal, it worked. Now we have to work more with our principals and counselors to say, how did that work for the kids? What do their GPAs look like? Where would we apply those exemptions? What's the right process we need to do? So I think there is an engagement process we need to do to determine that. But we don't need an AD, we just need to come up with the procedures and expectations. And I don't know if you wanna add to that, Martha Looping.
So just a comment on that, and that.
Did you have a response?
Go, go ahead.
Well, there were, there's been a few questions that have been pointed out, but what I don't wanna get lost is something that Assistant Sue Fontaine mentioned, and that's, we have, we are seeing a pretty impressive increase in the instructional time that our high school students are spending in ninth, tenth, and eleventh. The reason why staff continues to advocate for the flexibility in the senior year, is because we believe that's a conversation that needs to happen between counselor, teachers, family, and student. I do agree, it's a difference when you have a student with eighteen credits and a one point oh, versus a student who has eighteen credits, several APs, and a three point five. It's a different conversation, but it's a conversation best had in the counselor's office, and we do have some work to refresh our institutional practices, including refreshing our counseling manuals, and some specific sort of logic models around, you know, when these situations make sense, so their students are supported. And we want them on campus, we want them getting supports, and we want them there those nine ninety hours. In my mind, that doesn't necessarily mean eight classes, because it might mean some other support that's important to that student. So, but we need, we need that kind of flexibility to do that work. And it is a conversation that needs to engage our high school principals and our counselors as a whole, so that we can codify some of this, whether it's an AD or a counseling manual. This is not unusual work for school systems to be doing, in their high school or secondary redesign work. And there's actually a few other preliminary steps, like course calibrating across all of our high schools. They, the syllabus should mean something similar across campuses, and so we still have work to do there. Never mind proficiency-based grading and continued conversation around mastery of standards, and we need to have the more meaningful level of conversation, so that we're not just checking off boxes, but our kids are truly ready to persist through, through college. So, I'll leave it there.
Well, Sue, I have just a clarifying question, because there's unfortunately some misunderstanding, I think. Would there ever be a circumstance in our district when a student would be denied the opportunity to enroll in eight classes?
No.
No, I can't.
Well, I, I mean, it seems obvious, but there is conversation in the community that, that seems to think that that is possible. And I, it, that's because we did have that as the norm. My eldest child group was in high school in the time of part-time school, when the norm was for students, even sophomores, to have six classes. And you saw these kids walking around downtown Portland, you know, in the middle of the day, and they were either denied a full eight-period schedule, or they were stuck in a non-academic study hall. So, I mean, that's why people are sensitive to it, but I just wanted to make that clarification.
The State Board actually was very explicit about that. You couldn't do that. But that's, that's, that was the case until the parents got that fixed. But it's, that's, that's not the issue. It's the, the, how they get advised, like, should they, I mean, this is where the educators and the counselors should really be advising, like.
Yeah.
If you, if this is what your aspiration is, to go to community college, to go to technical school, to go to a four-year university, if you need merit money, this is what you need to do, or the class, types of classes you need to take, the sequencing that you're gonna need, you might need four years of math. So it's, to Amy's point, that there was a time when the entire district, with the exception of Roosevelt and Benson, students were told they couldn't take a full day of school. So it, it may sound preposterous, but it happened for.
It does.
Eighty-three percent of the stu, it happened for eighty-three percent of the students. So, this is, I think, one of the issues, is the players in this building have all completely changed, and there's still, a lot of the things that you referenced, that are improvements, are because parents, like, the signing off, that was totally driven by the Parents Coalition, that the parents had to sign if their students were taking less than a full day. That scorecard on On Track to Graduate, that was designed in cooperation between the staff here and the Parents Coalition. So there was, those are all things that PPS, most of the steps, was goers. So there was, those are all things that PPS, most of the steps, was coerced into doing it. It was not done voluntarily. So this is a pivot moment, but if you wonder why there's, like, a lack of trust, it's that for six years, nothing was easy in terms of adding the teachers back or getting kids scheduled back in those classes and getting rid of useless study halls. So there is a-
I'm pleased to report, I can just say unequivocally, a no.
Yeah.
Okay, that's not an option, okay? And I'm also pleased to look at what our numbers are now as opposed to what you shared with me, they were like before. I think that we're on a very positive upward trend here in regards to our high school instruction. Some of that articulation of curriculum that Superintendent Guerrero was talking about, we're actually working on Thursday at the high school, where all the principals were getting together to start that work. And so we're much more intentional about the aims and the outcomes of our high school students than maybe we have been in some time. And I think maybe some of that work that was done has helped get us here, but we're in a different place today than we were then. And I feel very positive about the work that we're doing right now.
And I know I made a commitment to you on the phone, but to the whole board, we definitely want to engage parents, and especially parents who worked very hard to ensure that students were going to have a full day, in thinking about how we want to go about applying the exemptions. So I guess I want to be crystal clear, that we don't want to just, like, kind of like, open the gates, and now a whole bunch of kids are going to be out. We don't want to go back that direction. It will be much more intentional. And not just with that, just about everything that we're doing. We realize there's a lot of kids who've been falling through the cracks because there haven't been systems in place to first clarify expectations and support, both for the schools and the teachers, as well as the kids. And all of that work is what we're working on right now.
So I don't think you've heard anyone say that we would deny a student access to a full course schedule in their senior year if they choose it. We also don't want to give the message, we want to make it compulsory for the student who's met graduation requirements and is looking for other opportunities to prepare them for their post-secondary plan. We're just suggesting that's a conversation for the family, the student, and the school to have. You know, it's unfortunate that it's only till recently that things like individualized student success plans at the high school level, or On Track reports, stuff. These are things that the major urban school systems have been doing for a decade. So we're doing, we're doing some catch-up, and we're going to get stronger in this area, but you should expect more of that kind of progress monitoring, so everybody's really clear about their status. And more importantly, that we're able to direct supports and interventions to those students.
Absolutely.
Okay, Director Anthony?
Thank you. And again, I don't want to beat a dead horse, but I really appreciated the comment that Director Constan was saying, and the way that she said it. I am hearing the same thing. And not just as a generalized anxiety, I'm hearing from specific people in specific school communities, that there are specific classes that the principals are planning on dropping. Because there will not, with this exemption, they'll be able to cut back on the FTE that they put towards specific courses. And I want to be very clear, my expectation, and I expect, I would be shocked if I didn't speak for the board, when I said, we do not want to see this used as an excuse to narrow opportunities for any student, at all.
First time I've heard that explanation.
I've, I've heard quite a bit of it. Thank you.
So I also want to say, though, as we work on the high school schedules, and we look for what is needed, and we're actually looking at the students, there will be changes in the course offerings, because we also need to provide more support. So one of the options we can do, for example, at the freshman level, is that kids get grade-level content, and then maybe they also get a support class in that same skill area that they get elective credit for. So those are ways to not overload them with too many courses, but instead to support them. Many high schools have already done that in this state. That just wasn't the priority before. It was more, to us, to some of us who are just understanding, it looked more like a priority around how many electives we had versus really looking at what are the pathways that starts with the core and the basic skills, and getting them up to a high level of rigor and achievement. So there's a lot of work to do, so there will be changes. You will see those. So I don't want assumptions to be made as we make those adjustments that it's all because of an exemption. Right?
No, yeah.
Student representative, please.
Well, yeah, I mean, I just continue the conversation that I think this flexibility will allow many students, will take stress off of a lot of students if, I mean, I can name students that are the, like, one of the main provider for their family, and they have to go out and get a job, and they're scheduled, like, they're, the freshman to junior schedule doesn't allow them to do that. So, and I, I mean, I don't want to see it be a limiting factor either, and I don't think it will be. And in my mind, I'm thinking, I think this is going to take a lot, again, this is going to take a lot of stress off of students. And it's just going to, it's going to allow them to do what they need to do to support their families. And, you know, if, I mean, I hate to use example, but with what I've been going through this year with applying to colleges and dealing with that whole jumble, and you're really playing the game, is that, I mean, a lot of my friends and a lot of my peers are going out and getting jobs right now, because they're concerned that they're not going to be able to, I mean, they know or are concerned they're not going to be able to pay for their college education. And so you're, we're seeing this trend of, like, I, I need more time to work and do other things because my family can't afford, and so I have to pitch in. So I'm hoping that this will be a very, this flexibility will help students take, it'll take their stress off of their class load, so.
Director Constan, did you?
Okay, I'd just like to note, we're about halfway through your presentation.
I think we're further.
Okay, maybe just over halfway. Would you like to finish?
This slide shows a snapshot of the seventeen, eighteen school year, and the number of students who were enrolled in one course, at least in one advanced coursework, is in blue. And then the orange line is students who are in three or more courses last school year. This slide shows the students' grades. So across the bottom is the, the grade that they earned in the course. And then at the top, the bar chart at the top, shows the score they earned on the AP exam. So students who take an AP exam is a scale of one to five, and students who earn a score of three or higher, depending on the university, can earn college credits or... So, just, if there are questions about this slide, or I can move to the next? Okay, so-
If it would be really helpful on each of these slides, if you just hit us over the head with your takeaway, takeaways.
Absolutely. So this, this slide was a-
Even going back to the last-
Okay, absolutely. So these slides were created specifically around questions that were asked at the August meeting, so I know that that was a long time ago, so I apologize. I was, so this slide, just pointing out that we have a number of students who are enrolled in advanced coursework, whether that's dual-credit, AP, IB. The number of students who are taking three or more of those classes in one school year is dramatically lower, as I think Director Brim Edwards had pointed out earlier. But this is definitely a goal that we are working on to increase exposure. So I think the high numbers in blue are exciting, because it means we're increasing exposure to students in college coursework, college-level coursework, and also shows some of the work we have to do to increase the number that students get to take each year.
So we're assuming more students taking three college-level courses a year in high school is a good thing?
This, this chart just shows what, what the line was for how many are actually earning three credits. That was the question that was asked of us, is what does that look like in regards to how many total students were taking it?
I'm asking a question. You seem to apply, and we're working to break this number down.
Let me clarify. I think it would be clear, because we have it broken down by, by race here. So I think what I meant is that I think that we would like that orange bar to be more level, so that students of all races have, right, equitable access to courses and preparedness and rigor, and opportunities for rigor. So the question that came, I apologize, regarding this slide, was around how are students doing in the courses, and then how do they perform on the AP exam? So, sorry, is there a question?
I was just trying to figure out.
Okay. So, so this slide, so at the bottom, so I'll give you an example. So if we're looking at the three column, that, those are the number of students who earned a three on the AP exam. And then below was their grade that they earned in the course. So in the class, four hundred and twenty students earned an A. And, and then, so, and the grade A, right, is correlated to the number of students who earned a three there. Is their grade at the top?
I was just trying to get the, the generic is, three is a passing, or is it four?
Correct. Three is a passing in AP, four for IB.
It also varies by higher institution as to what you get.
Does it credit, that column?
Five.
With five at a, like, a public university, but a highly selective?
Well, so for mo-, are we talking about college credit based on IB? So I can say for IB, IB credits with testing goes a lot further in state schools, but if you're going to go to private schools, you have to have at least a score of a five on the test, and the test and class has to be a higher level, higher, higher-level HL class. So it's a, it's, that, that range shrinks drastically when it comes to that, so.
And this is the same slide, but for, as our student rep was discussing, the IB exam. So IB exams are different than AP in that they are on a one-to-seven scale. And earning a four or higher on an IB exam can earn you college credits. And again, there are two levels of IB courses. SL, standard level, or HL, which is higher level, and then also the exam score. So this is, and again, we offer the IB diploma program at two high schools, Cleveland and Lincoln. So the, the status is just reflective of two high schools.
So looking at it roughly, we do sort of observe bell curves, both in AP and IB, so that the exam scores or outcomes seem to be matching letter grade. So as you might expect, the fives, the sevens, you'll tend to see more of the As being.
Yes, because I think that that was the question, are we putting students in these courses who are then not able to perform on the exam? And so generally, yes. And then this is for dual-credit. So dual-credit doesn't have the exams at the end that are required for credit. So students who are in the courses and then enroll in PCC earn college credit hours. So this is, this slide represents the students who are enrolled in a dual-credit course. And the reason that it's different is that not all of our students who are enrolled in the dual-credit course are earning the college credit. And so there's a few different reasons for that. So one of them might be that the dual-credit course they're taking doesn't necessarily align with what they imagine as their college path. And because there is limits to financial aid, they can still take the dual-credit, have the exposure to accelerated coursework, and then have it, not have it count on their college transcript, for example.
Or receive high school credit.
And they, but they still receive high school credit, yes.
And hopefully, the answer to that question is never that they couldn't afford to pay for the fee to receive the credit.
Right. Are there fees attached to dual-credit courses?
Yes, we pay.
Yeah.
That we pay?
That we pay. But they're a lot cheaper than the enrollment, what it would cost if you were enrolled at the higher institution.
Okay, so, I'm not quite sure I understood what your explanation was. So there are students taking dual-credit courses who are passing those courses who are nonetheless not getting college credit?
Correct.
Because they're not mastering the-
Nope, they're choosing not to pay the fee, because for whatever reason, they don't think it's going to be necessary, or-
So that's my question. Are there, are there fees attached to dual-credit courses that have to be paid by students?
By students, no.
Okay, so, so why would someone, I mean, okay, is there, am I missing something?
So my understanding, my understanding is, is that if they, if they acquire credits, in some cases, if they acquire credits that are not part of the, their plan for what they have to take toward graduation, then it can actually reduce what they can apply for, for credits in the future, for scholarships and stuff. So sometimes it's strategically wise for them to not take credits for some of the courses that they're taking, because it doesn't align to the coursework that they wanted to take. Isn't that correct?
Yes. Okay, and that, ladies and gentlemen, is just another example of how stupid our pre-K through college continuum is. Just saying.
How unseamless.
Unseamless.
Not a word, but-
This is more about financial aid, though. That's what, that's what my understanding is.
Long-term, yes, long-term. Yeah, yeah. After you graduate from high school.
So it's not that they don't want the, if they could get the credits and not have some sort of penalty, they probably would take the credits.
Absolutely.
But by taking the credit, it impacts their overall amount of financial aid.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
That qualifies as stupid, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that's not, that's not the system being stupid, that's the financial aid.
Yeah.
Which, which is part of the system, just saying.
That's exactly correct.
Well, you can touch on the fact, too, just across the board, with dual-credit, IB and AP, if you're on free and reduced lunch as well, I think, if not, if most of it, or if not all, is paid. There is, they don't, students don't have to pay anything, right?
For free and reduced lunch.
For free and reduced lunch, right.
There, and just to be clear, there are substantial fees attached to AP and IB courses.
Oh, huge.
Tests.
Huge.
IB tests are very expensive.
Two hundred bucks.
Full IB students, like seniors this year, are, I think there, some of my friends are writing checks for seven, seven hundred fifty, eight hundred, eight hundred fifty dollars to take, what, five, four or five tests, so.
Yeah.
About two hundred bucks.
Huge.
But that's not being paid for if you're historically underserved student. Correct. District covers it?
Financial need.
Free or dismat.
Some of those, some of those details regarding finances on this chart right here for you, okay?
So the flip, the flip side is, eight hundred bucks is a lot cheaper than forty thousand dollars in tuition.
If it applies to your school.
Right, right, exactly.
Which you don't know until after you get your score.
Yeah.
My family's personal experience was, I'd say, mixed. ESU credit didn't go anywhere.
In statistics.
Okay, moving on.
Okay, so the next question that had been asked was, what is the course drop rate for students who are enrolled in advanced coursework? And so in the last school year, seventeen, eighteen, only four percent of students who had enrolled in advanced coursework dropped the course between the fifteen-day drop deadline and two weeks before the end of semester.
And so we know that you're considering all four exemptions this evening, and we just want to be able to provide you more detail about exemptions two and three, senior On Track, and the advanced accelerated coursework options. We wanted to provide you that detail. I'm going to just skip this chart, just because we don't have Sean here to go into the details of one of those columns, which I know you're going to ask me questions about.
Can we go back a slide?
No, no, we cannot. It's broken. It doesn't. And so the staff still is in a position where we still endorse and recommend that the board consider all four exemptions. We've also requested the possibility of exemptions, voting, when you do choose to vote, that you vote on exemptions for nineteen, twenty as well. It does help with us in projecting our course catalogs and all that other work that we have to do as we go forward. But I'll leave that in your capable hands to decide.
And then what would be the follow-up with regard to what we were discussing with Deputy Superintendent Curtis about codifying procedures, not policies, but procedures around ninth through eleventh graders? around ninth through eleventh graders being scheduled for a full school day?
And we're not far from that right now. I mean, we can certainly bring those recommendations back to you to make sure that they're aligning with your, your desires as a board.
That is the assumption and the intention. And most, for the most part, the current practice.
Yeah.
Okay, and we'll be seeing you again next month, so, more to come.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So, just, I had a host of other questions that I know that Dr. Curtis had said that you'd be responding to, so I appreciate that, and I'm happy to share the questions with the rest of the, the board. And most of them are around, sort of, what does really on-track mean? And I think I want to just echo also Director Konstam's comments because this has been, it was a huge breach of trust between lots of parents who had students in high schools and PPS, and I think people are going to want to sort of feel, be able to see it and feel like, what is it going to look like? And then actions build trust, but the, the numbers are much better. It's just, there's been years of, that wasn't the case. So, appreciate that.
Okay, and at some point, I'm going to want to talk about the schedule for high schools and whether it makes sense to have an eight-course schedule for students in high school, ninth grade through twelfth grade. When do we get to talk about that? Let's put it on the work plan.
So, are you going, is that a policy discussion that the board is looking to have around graduation requirements and course loads and?
Well, I don't know, but, I mean, I, I think a lot of what we're, what we are spending a great deal of time talking about is driven by the fact that we have students who are entering their senior year with an extraordinary number of, of credits that far exceed the number that they're going to need to get a diploma. And in the meantime, how many kids are dropping out in freshman year and sophomore year and junior year because they cannot cope with an eight-course schedule? I mean, I, I think we're tracking kids.
Which is why we shouldn't insist on it.
Right.
We should have that conversation with parents and students and counselors and find the right equilibrium and balance so that they actually persist through high school and don't drop our comprehensives and be one of the twenty percent of the students in alternative programs.
There are so many pieces to this that we need to analyze and get more information about. I would suggest that we don't just jump to saying we're going to change the schedule because that create, that will create a ton of fallout. What it would be better is to say, let's be intentional about helping kids decide what they're going to take because the research does show when kids take more of those advanced courses and persist in them, even if their grade points lower, that they are better prepared for staying the course once they get to college. So, that is one reason why having them take those courses is something we've been encouraging. Yes, we're all, I think, concerned about the number of kids that are in alternative ed here in PPS, but I think there's multiple reasons, so we have a lot of work to do to figure out what that is. And we're finding that when we do make a mandate that says, this is why, what we want you to do and why we want you to do it, our, our high schools are cooperating and getting things done as best they can.
Okay.
So, I think the interest of everybody is to do the best we can for student, it's just that a lot of people haven't been looking at certain things.
So, I'm going to just echo Director Moore, because I really think, I mean, this has been like the big elephant in the room because the, we went to eight periods, not because it was better for students, we went to eight periods because then we only, then we could tell them they weren't going to go to school all day and it was cheaper. That's why we went to eight periods, so it wasn't an instructional reason. So, and this has been the ongoing conversation that we've had, and so when people say, it's just too many, we can't have kids in school all day, it's just like, then we must have too many classes or something. So, I, well, I think we should have the conversation.
There's multiple ways of dealing with it.
I think there's a pretty good conversation around the advantages of block scheduling, too, where you're not just getting a forty-five minute period.
Particularly when you get into the CTE classes. I mean, that's a whole, I mean, there's a whole, there's a whole, there's a big conversation. I'm happy to have.
I have clearly opened up a, a, a whole Pandora's box here. So, I'm going to shut it now because it's now ten twenty, and we have a, a, quite a few things left to go. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to make sure, Director Brown, did you have this information? Oh, I'm going to give you my copy.
Yeah, I don't think it was in our packet, it wasn't in the online.
It was not in our packet.
I'll make sure that you all get a copy of this down.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, okay, so I am going to deviate from the agenda. I have received a request from the student representative that he be able to provide a presentation and his student report before we launch into all of the board policies discussion, which could be a little, a little lengthy, because I do believe he has to go home and do some homework. A lot of homework, okay. So, in, in the interest of student-centeredness, I'm going to make an executive decision to allow him to do his report now.
Can't we grant him an exemption from doing his homework?
No, because we, oh. And we want to hear his request.
I want to be successful.
Okay, so, so please make your report and then leave when you have to.
And I think Brian's still in the back, but I'll announce it when we get there. So, I just want to go over, on October twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, I, along with a few other board members and the executive leadership team, attended the Fall Conference of the Council of Greater City Schools in Baltimore. I had the privilege, along with seven other students from around the country, I was the only one from the very west coast, so that was actually kind of cool. Were able to speak out on live stream about topics and issues ranging from youth voting, stopping climate change and, and, or, and stopping climate change and just all issues involved with education and students. Not to my surprise, we had ten questions we were supposed to get to in ten topics, but we only got to about three, because so much was, so much had to be said. I was actually the first student to speak on the panel that day. I got the first question about young voting and how to increase voters of my age about, or about making it to the polls. And I really just wanted, I really just started off by saying that I think a lot of vote, a lot of kids my age don't really know how, don't really know how voting affects them, not aware of how much it actually matters and how that they're, or how much they can actually impact when they do make it to the polls. And so, I started advocating that we need to get into schools more and advocate for, for voting, it needs to be part of our curriculum to show students really how much it means to them. Also during the panel, we went over the topic of gun violence and fighting gun violence in this country, and I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, but a student was present that actually survived the Majory Stoneman Douglas High School shooting in Parkland, Florida. And after her response, I left the room and I just stood for a few minutes and I thought to myself, no student ever should ever have to tell that story. That shouldn't have had to be expressed and in the future, that should just, that shouldn't happen. And so, I think we saw a lot of, like, motivation that day to, for motivation, student motivation to reform gun control. I also got to meet a student named Joshua Lynn, who holds the exact same position as I do on the, sorry, who, who holds the exact same position that I do on the Board of Education for Baltimore City Schools, and we both advocated together that day that this position needs to be more widely spread throughout the country to the other greater districts in the United States. Okay, and then I think there's a small video of the panel that we're able to play, just to go over.
As we'll hear from students who have traveled from all across the nation to be with you today, it's no secret that we are in the middle of a critical election year. Whether you're liberal, conservative, or somewhere in between, a quick scan of this election cycle will reveal that so much is at stake.
Would you support changing the voter age to seventeen so that you could vote while you're seniors, all of you, not just the ones that turned eighteen before November?
Yes, yes.
I believe that students at sixteen, we work in your state, we, you take our taxes, we deserve to vote. You have our taxes, we want to know what you do with them. So, we, I definitely support seventeen, but one hundred, a thousand percent sixteen.
If we bring back civics, if we do, like, voting, like, class president, class vice president, I mean, we did that, and, you know, not everybody wins, you know, like, at a young age, till now, then, yes, we will have a, a, a more educated sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen-year-olds. I think we're very smart. This is a smart panel. So, yes, I wish you were able to vote.
And, you know, everybody's telling us, like, you need to understand what it's like in the real world. We are in the real world, this is the real world. We experience it every day. We see everything that goes on around us, and we're aware of our surroundings. And if we're educated about how to make decisions in our communities, then, you know, we can get further and further.
All of us on the panel today, I think that we tend to represent a very small amount of students that are civically engaged. But the fact that only sixteen percent of age group, or sixteen percent of our age group said that they have voted, I think that has a lot, has a lot to do with it, students don't really see how their voice and their vote can make a difference and have more discussions with entire schools. I mean, have assemblies with entire schools and really get students involved in certain issues because we all come from different backgrounds, and I think the more students know the, how they can be connected to voting will help us in the long run.
I think that what's important is, is that each of us, especially those that come from a place of privilege, that we're extending a hand to those that feel that they don't have a voice, and again, that we're stressing that no matter who you are, where you come from, your background, the income that your parents make, I want to hear your perspective because your perspective is valid.
I feel like me speaking on this panel today is a huge opportunity and a blessing because I can speak for the students who can't speak upon their situational awareness, who can't have a voice for themselves, who can't speak for every other kid that they see that's just like them. So, the order that's around in the school, I feel like advocating for it, I can develop it, make it better somehow. So.
So, that's just a little snippet of the session that went, I think, over an hour longer than it was supposed to because, again, there's so much to say. But I'm very thankful that the superintendent made this trip happen, along with the executive leadership team, and it's something that I'll never, never forget. Also, last week, on October eighth, I was invited to attend Grant, Grant High School's Race Forward Equity Event that took place, or that took place at Grant, or at the Marshall Campus, but was centered around having conversations about race, but specifically, which we mentioned before, like Native American History Month. And so, we held conversations about that and with equity issues surrounding that topic. And then, following that presentation, Grant's Student Equity Team, along with Administration at Grant, had been working hard to fly the first Native American flag in PPS, which I thought was a really huge deal and something that maybe, something that should have, how do I say this, that, or it's about, you know, it's about time, something that happened a long time ago, you know, in that sense, and I know Dr. Curtis was there as well. So, it was really great to see that happen, and I think this is more, we're moving more towards recognizing underserved communities and underserved groups in our district. And then, looking forward, the District Student Council, which I just met with, met with today, we're still planning our annual leadership summit, but it is scheduled for December first, from ten AM to two PM at Cleveland High School, and we're hoping, we've been reaching out to all the high schools' leadership, leadership classes, as well as social justice and affinity clubs, and are hoping to get maximum representation from around the district, so, yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Um, can I just wax poetic a little bit about the panel, student panel?
Sure.
There was, there was, you were great, they were all great. There were a number of people on that panel that I wish I could have voted for on Tuesday, and I trust at some point, we will be voting for them. It was, I mean, it sort of restores hope in the next generation, and I'm, I'm glad you were able to go. You, you, you represented well, thank you.
I have to chime in as well because I think as the student panel just went down
the row introducing themselves, I felt like an incredible underachiever. What an impressive group of young adults, and thank you for representing us very ably. We're very proud of you.
Yeah, I think, well, I mean, I think the main point of it was that I think students do more than people think we do. I mean, we're working hard, I mean, it's ten thirty, I'm here, I want to represent all the students in the district, so we're, we're doing a lot for our future. I think we've really realized that going forward.
I also want to thank Superintendent Guerrero because it was actually your idea that you brought to the council to have the student panel and then to make sure that Nick was there, representing us so well, and it was absolutely a highlight and such a good reminder that, you know, you guys have the answers more often than not.
Yeah, I was going to talk about you during my report of our trip to council, but you were fabulous and that panel was just outstanding.
Thank you.
So, it was definitely a highlight to be part of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
All right.
Now, go do your homework.
Yes.
Don't stay up all night.
Don't stay up all night. Okay, I think we'll have more commentary about the council conference later.
Yep, and also just to note that apparently now we do have a link to the entirety of the student panel.
Yes.
So, we can get that up on the website because it is, to everybody out there, all sixteen of the people watching this, it is absolutely worth watching the entire thing. It's incredible.
Yeah.
You notice now that next to it, the rest of the audience.
Old crowd.
Really interesting stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we're going to move on to the policy stuff. So, we're going to start with a second reading on the Preservation, Maintenance, and Disposition of District Real Property policy. So, the board held a first reading of this policy on October second, and the policy has been posted for public comment since that time. The board is now ready to vote on the amended Preservation, Maintenance, and Disposition of District Real Property, which will also include a rescission of the Real Estate Transaction Policy.
So, actually, we need to move the, we need to move the amendment that was first read at the same time, we need to incorporate it in to the, to the policy, and then, then vote on the underlying policy. Just as a recollection, we
Okay.
had that separate amendment, which is, we took it out of the
Right.
the policy that we're rescinding, and we transported it, either we, freestanding first read.
Okay, so, the board will now consider an amendment of Resolution Number five, seven, six, zero of.
It's actually not an amendment of the resolution, it's voting on the amendment to the policy. It was posted, it's been on the website, in the draft policy section, as Amendment Number One to the Preservation, Maintenance, and Disposition of District Real Property.
Okay, I'm going to read this as written, okay. The board will now consider Resolution Number five, seven, six, zero, Amendment of Disposition of Surplus Real Property, eight point seven zero point four zero P, and Rescission of Real Estate Transaction Policy, eight point seven zero point zero four one P.
Yes, I think the script has missed the amendment. So, before we get to that, there's been a first reading of the amendment, Number One to the policy, and now that needs to be voted on so that when you vote on fifty-seven, sixty, you're voting on it as amended.
So, I would move that we add, adopt Amendment Number One to the draft policy.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Director Brem Edwards, seconded by Director Konstam. Do we have any discussion? Do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed, say no? Any abstentions? Okay, the amendment is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, so.
Now the script.
Okay, so, now, can I get a motion and a second on Resolution five, seven, six, zero as amended?
So.
Okay, Director Konstam moves, Director Spazier-Bran second, the amended Resolution five, seven, six, zero. Is there any board discussion?
Just want to note that it came out of committee with Ayena's recommendation to approve the recommendations, and this is part of the board's effort to sort of ma- the recommendations, and this is part of the board's effort to sort of maximize and optimize our physical assets, which the previous policy did not.
Okay, do we have any public comment?
We do not.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5760. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Extensions? Abstentions? Okay, the resolution passes by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on to second readings, policy rescissions.
Are you going to move it to me?
Yeah, I'm going to ask Director Brim Edwards to carry this forward.
Okay, and we could move through these pretty quickly. So, these, as everybody will recall, earlier this, last month, we had a first reading on a number of rescissions. These are policies that are duplicative, out of date, or not needed. And so, we had a public comment period. On all of these rescissions, there were no, there was no public comment. And so, tonight, we're considering several of them, and once we vote on them, they'll be removed from the policy manual. So, we have the Public Information Program Policy, which is 7.30.010. We have the Teacher Transfer Policy, 5.20.060. We have the Administrative Recommendation on Employment of Relatives Policy, and that, just, by the way, it's been superseded by a new policy that we adopted last year, which was the Conflict of Interest Nepotism Policy. And then, we, the last policy that we previously first read for rescission was a noncontractual grievance procedure that creates a collective bargaining-like grievance procedure for administrators over those who claim violations of civil rights laws or assurances given by the district. The policy was adopted in 1997 and has not been amended since. It's not a widely-used policy and creates unnecessary grievance procedures. So, those are the four policies that were second read. And again, they've been distributed by the board, to the board. There was no comment from board members, no public comment, and the, they came out of committee on the unanimous recommendation that we rescind the policies.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, the board will now consider Resolution Number 5761, rescission, rescission of Public Information Program Policy 7.30.010P. The Teacher Transfers Policy 5.20.060P. Noncontractual Grievance Procedure Policy 5.40.020P. And Recommendations on Employment of Relatives Policy 5.060015P. Okay, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstant moves, Director Espazabran seconds. Resolution 5761, is there any public comment?
No.
Okay, do we have any board discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on Resolution 5761. All in favor, please indicate by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, say no? Any abstentions? Okay, Resolution 5761 is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
I just want to make a comment with these policy rescissions. I want to thank Liz Large for your yeoman's work on all of this housekeeping. It's decidedly unglamorous, but necessary and overdue, and thank you very much. It's good to get through this.
Thank you. I know that there are folks on a number of teams doing this work in their own subject areas, in HR, in legal, in risk, so there's, there's a lot going on behind the scene as well.
Thank you. Thanks to all.
Okay, next, we have a first reading of the District Performance Auditor Policy 1.60.040P. I'd like to ask Director Brim Edwards to introduce the item.
So, this is another item that's being recommended for a first reading, coming out of the Policy and Governance Committee, unanimous recommendation. I want to thank Deputy Superintendent Hertz for working with the committee. Essentially, we, there were some amendments we're making to, this is an established policy. We're making some amendments to it to clarify that the district auditors are district employees. They report to the audit committee, but they have a data line to the Deputy Superintendent for Business and Operations for ministerial or administrative employment-related matters. The proposed amendment also clarifies that the board retains the ultimate authority to hire, evaluate, and terminate the employment of the auditor, very important sort of accountability mechanism. The proposed amendments also, if you look at it, there's a number of things that have been removed, and they really were duplicative because we're aligning our policies or in the work the auditors are doing to the government auditing standards. And so, it's not necessary for us to repeat some of those standards in the policy. So, it's, this is very timely to come to the board because we're in the process, we put into this year's budget funding for performance auditors. They're posted, and it would be great to have the policy ready for a, the new auditors when they get here. And so, we've got the first reading tonight and then going into public comment period.
Can we get a marked-up version?
Yes.
Okay, any questions or comments? Okay, the proposed policy will be posted on the board website, and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last date of comment being December 4th, 2018. Contact information of public comment will be posted with the policy. The board will hold a second reading of the policy at their December 11th meeting. Okay, first reading, the policy rescissions. We'll now have a first reading of several policy rescissions, and again, I'd like to ask Director Brim Edwards to introduce the item.
So, you know, the first four that we had tonight were just really getting us rolling. So, we're going to clean up our manual and get things out of it that really, I think, clutter up the manual. So, we have a whole host of rescissions, and just as a reminder, what the rescission is and the process is, we're going to be removing this and deleting the policy from our policy manual. And we have a first reading. There'll be an opportunity for the public to comment if anybody disagrees with the rescission. They have an opportunity within the 21 days, and then when we vote the second time after the 21 days, the policy will be rescinded. They're all posted online. The last date for comment is the fourth, and then we'll vote after that. So, I'm going to just move through them. Again, these all came out of the Policy and Governance Committee on a unanimous vote, starting with the Reporting Statement of Economic Interest 1.40.020. This policy states that ORS Chapter 244 does not apply and allow for voluntarily filed statements at the discretion of the board. The policy is simply not needed. We're not required to file these. The board does plan to adopt additional conflicts of interest policy, and in fact, the one we applied earlier had a whole section related to the board. We're also going to have an upcoming training, as a reminder, either refresh or new for the board on ethics and conflict of interest, but this is just not needed because it basically says we can file them if we want. Next, there's a policy in the method of board operations 1.70.010. This policy unnecessarily defines the board actions as needing to comply with applicable laws and regulations, which is true regardless of the existence of the policy. So, it just says we'll follow the law. Then, next, we're proposing rescinding job description 5.10.010. This policy merely restates the obligations of OAR 581-022-715, which no longer exists, and it was last amended in 1995. We have a Employee Suggestion Award Program in Policy 5.10.040. This policy does not reflect a current district practice and was last amended in 1988. Next, we have Tax-deferred Annuities Policy 5.10.070. This policy does not reflect a current district practice and was last amended in 1979, when I graduated from high school. Next, there's Orientation of Teachers 5.20.040. This policy relates to onboarding, or the district believes in appropriately onboarding all its new employees. This policy is not needed to affect this practice. We have it in our HR department. This policy has not been amended since its enactment in 1971, when I was in elementary school. Compensation-related benefits miscellaneous. Maybe we'll get to your elementary school here. Miscellaneous 5.60.050. It's a policy that allows for the board to determine certain benefits for administrators. Is not necessary, was the last amended in 1977. Next, there's an alternative to military leave policy 5.50.063. This policy endeavors to state what qualifies for military service under a federal statute and is unnecessary. It has not been amended since enacted in 1971. Next, employment in institutions of higher learning, the restoration of health 5.50.067. Teacher leaves of absence are governed by collective bargaining agreements. This policy has not been amended since enacted in 1971. Next, administrative in-service requirements 5.60.080. Administrator in-service requirements are governed by collective bargaining agreements, or, I'm sorry, administrative, not administrators. Administrative in-service requirements are governed by collective bargaining agreements. This policy has not been amended since enacted in 1971. Next, retirement, permanently disabled 5.20.140. Permanent disability eligibility is determined by statute. This, so this isn't needed. This policy was last amended in 1992. Then, there's the Administrative Clerical Personnel Salary Schedule 5.70.055. This policy covers employment terms and conditions that are covered by collective bargaining agreements and/or other policies, resolutions, practices. It was last amended in 1980. And then, lastly, we have three, no, four policies that actually contain no substantive policy provisions. Literally, it's just a header, just a title. So, those four are Educators Council 5.40.030, Professional Compensation 5.50.010, Professional Improvements 5.50 dot 040, and Professional Growth Incentive 5.50 dot 043. And again, none of those contain any substantive policy, so we're just eliminating them because if we actually want people to use our policy manual, our virtual policy manual, we'll eliminate things that are just create clutter.
I'm sorry, our audience, we have two people on the phone, and one with a book.
Well, hopefully, when we get these rescinded, it will make the stuff that people need to find easier to find. And actually, you know, just it's much better practice. So, those are the policy revisions that the committee is recommending for first reading rescissions.
Okay, okay, so, just to remind everybody, these proposed policy rescissions will be posted on the board website, and the public comment period is 21 days, with the last date of comment being December 4th, 2018. The board will hold a second reading of the policy rescissions at the December 11th meeting.
One comment I have on one of these, which is, I do not object to its proposed rescission, but on Employee Suggestion Award Program, obviously, this is not something we practice or have funded in our budget, but I would love to invite Superintendent and your staff to consider a proposal like that if you think it's a best practice in our next budget cycle around employee suggestions or an innovation fund for educators, because other school districts do that with great success, and it's, you know, energizing for employees to feel like their input is being solicited in that way. So, I'd love to see us have something like that if you guys are interested.
Okay, we're almost done. Business Agenda. Board members, Resolutions 5752 through 5759 have been removed from the business agenda. The board will now consider the remainder of its business agenda, having already voted on Resolutions 5749 through 5761. Ms. Houston, are there any changes?
No.
Okay. Do I have a motion and a second to adopt the business agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Director Konstant moves, Director Brim Edwards seconds, the adoption of the business agenda. Ms. Houston, any public comment?
There is not.
Okay, any board discussion? Okay, the board will now vote on the business agenda. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, please say no? Any abstentions? Okay, the budgeted, the business agenda is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Okay, so, almost, almost to the end. Okay, Board Committee and Conference Reports. We already heard from the student representative.
Assistant.
Okay, and so, Director Brim Edwards has...
So, they're just partial reports, so, the committee report, almost eighty percent of it just happened. There were three other policies that were considered by the committee, and actually, one of them had been targeted for a second reading and approval tonight, and that's the Proprietary Conduct Policy that we have been working on. And we did receive public comments. We discussed it at the meeting. There is an amendment that we're going to make, and I don't, do I need to discuss what the amendment, or, I guess we have plenty of time. We have plenty of time.
It's going back to the policy.
Yeah, so, there is a, we did receive some public comment on the policy, so we're going to be making some amendments, but we also didn't bring it to the full, full board for a second reading because we have a demand to bargain from the Portland Association of Teachers, so we'll want to listen to their concerns about what's in the policy, any suggestions they might have in terms of before we adopt this policy. So, we'll engage in that activity, but that's why it didn't get second read this evening. And then, there were two other policies that we were going to move out, but we're waiting, not waiting, we would welcome staff input on them. One is a district policy relating to field trips, and the second is, and that was another policy that came out of the Whitehurst Report, and the second, the other policy was a proposal from Director Moore on boundaries, and, these are the real boundaries, physical boundaries. And we are welcoming staff input before we move that out of committee, so I think we'd ask to have some staff comment by the 15th, and then at our next committee meeting, we'll consider it, those, and potentially move it out.
Does anybody have any conference reports? We've had a few, so, Director Espazabran?
As Nick mentioned earlier, several of us, so, Board Member Konstant, Board Chair Moore, and myself, along with Superintendent Guerrero and other senior leaders, attended the 62nd Annual Fall Conference of the Council of the Great City Schools. And Nick already gave you that report and wonderful video of the student panel, which was a great experience, and thank you for recommending that. I'm sure that is the first of many panels that we'll see in the upcoming years. So, what's important to note, I think, when we go to conferences, is the importance of the conferences and what's the learning from it. The council is, is a coalition of the nations, largest urban school systems aimed at providing the greatest public education possible in urban schools. So, the conference really offers an array of workshops that is relevant to both boards and to district, to district folks, with great opportunities for dialogue, kind of smaller sessions. There were also amazing keynote speakers that included Michelle Alexander, who's the author of the must-read, The New Jim Crow, Xier Khan, constitutional advocate, and the ever-inspiring Jill Biden, who had us all in tears. And then, on Saturday, Superintendent Guerrero and myself attended the annual executive committee meeting, and their packet was like 200 pages long. They do a lot of work within a year. And what's important also to note about council is the, they offer an array of services to its partner school districts, and I think that there are several that we will be looking at benefiting from in the future, such as audits and also board development services. So, they've also, they advocate for critical issues that have impacted schools, such as tougher gun legislation. So, all in all, they're really a great group to be a part of. The council, the conference is always fabulous, and it was a great experience, lots of good learning. learning.
Anybody else wanna?
I just had a question. I know that there's a requirement, if it's an out-of-state conference, to report to the Board. Is there a similar requirement for in-state? I'm just wondering, a number of us went to the OSBA conference, but is that only, is it a requirement?
I think it's out-of-state.
It's just out-of-state?
Yeah.
It is a policy that you have to report on if you go to an out-of-state conference at the next board meeting.
Okay, so...
Now that the policy manual is very uncluttered, you should be able to find it right away.
Not yet. There's more.
Okay, anybody else wanna say anything about the Council of Great City Schools? It was, it was a great conference. Okay, let's move on to OSBA.
I just wanna recognize that we had another senior staff who also presented and shared some of the work here for Portland Public Schools, so I just wanna thank the staff who flew out to share some of our best practices. Hopefully, maybe we can...
And on that same note, I was going to say that there's a bit of a buzz among our colleagues about the transformation that we are undertaking here, and it's nice to hear that from our colleagues and our friends, and to feel the support, and to feel people, you know, really wanting to reach out and share their resources, and there really is a sense of appreciation and understanding that Portland Public Schools is on the move.
So, I did, I'm sorry.
Well, I was just, the last part of that was, and, a great deal of respect for our Superintendent and his efforts.
I don't wanna interrupt that at all. I did pull up the policy, and it requires, yeah, that it shall be the duty of Board Members attending state or national meetings at district expense to make a report to the Board. Yeah. So, if you seek, yeah, if you seek reimbursement of any costs associated with the meeting, then it is subject to reporting at a board meeting. You'll be happy to report on it?
No, I don't have to.
Oh, because it's international. There you go.
So, there was a number of us who attended the Oregon School Boards Association, in addition to the Superintendent, and the focus was clearly on revenue, like, you couldn't get in an elevator, like, go to the bathroom or anything without seeing these big projections about revenue. So, I think a number of us attended the pre-session, or the pre-conference on Thursday, where the topic was revenue reform, advocacy and engagement. And then, as we got into the next two days, there was a whole host of, you know, great workshops. My favorite was the All Students on Track, Moving the Dial on College and Career Readiness, but just also a great opportunity to network with other, other Board Members and sort of talk about our plans ahead, both at our districts and also with the legislative session. So, I guess everybody kind of attended different sessions.
I just wanna mention that the OSBA Board met for one of its regular meetings immediately after the conference, and there again, it was all revenue reform all the time. The Board and its resources are very, very serious about making real change in this state, and I sure hope that we will be able to work well with them. One of the items on the Business Agenda, I'd also mention, the Community Budget Review Committee. We added members to it, and it had its first meeting this last week with all of those people. We are bringing some real intellectual firepower onto that committee, and those are very definitely people we will be able to leverage, putting them in front of the state legislature. So, I hope that we will be considering that.
Anybody else? Okay, I guess I have to say something, by statute, I'm required, by policy, by policy, okay. I mostly went to the revenue sessions, oddly enough, and I was very happy to hear a level of commitment and seriousness about pursuing substantially more revenue than I've heard in the past, and I am cautiously optimistic that we're going to get some additional funding for K-12, and I think we, as the largest school district in the state, have both an opportunity and an obligation to do what we can to support those efforts. Okay, having fulfilled our obligations for reporting, is there any other business? Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.